All of us in the room to try to keep the meeting moving forward. So I guess the first question, the first item on the agenda is comments from the public regarding items not on the agenda. Hands raised on here.
You should be. Does she open the panelists?
He's not showing as a panelist, Steve.
Oh, you're not?
Yeah.
Did you log in as yourself or?
I clicked on the link that you gave me. So I believe that I logged in and asked me for my name and I said that I was logging in as me.
And now you should be with me.
Okay. Voted to a panelist. Oh, I feel special. Okay.
Yeah, just a quick one. Martin, Brian, and Alex, I think you're all on as attendees. You should be on as panelists.
I'm promoting.
And that way we can hear you. Brian, we see you. Come on. Martin and Alex, if you are able to join as a panelist, then we can have an active discussion.
I'm promoting them.
Oh, perfect.
So I'll go. You can just, you should be able to continue now to see questions.
Okay, so I have, I have three hands raised. So can I do that on my computer then? Okay.
Yep.
So. You know it. Okay, okay. So Katie McCabe raised her hand and I see your raised hand, Katie. So it looks like it is working. I don't know if you have a question or not. Hi, was this a test? Okay, so we've acknowledged Katie. RETN. Also. Has their hand raised? RETN, do you have a question or were you just testing as well? Okay, Kathy Murphy has her hand raised. Kathy, did you have a question or were you also just testing? I can see your hand raised, Kathy. Okay, I think we have taken care of that. Does anyone actually have any questions? Okay, I see Annie has her hand raised. And RETN is asking if we can get video up, but I think the answer to that is that we cannot at this stage. We would have to start a new webinar to do that. So it's going to have to be by voice only.
So all of our documents though will be able to be seen?
Correct.
By everybody, right?
So Annie, I can see your hand raised. Do you have a question? I don't see a question from you, but I do see your hand raised.
Can you see the screen to share or not?
Yes.
Yeah, it's tiny, but.
Yeah, okay.
Just a test. That was just a test, it's all.
All right. All right, so I, I see Annie's hand raised, but I don't see that she has a question. I'm sorry that this is so complicated that we're still getting used to this. All right, so we will move forward. And the next item on the agenda is any amendments to the agenda. David, are there any amendments to the agenda?
No.
Okay. Moving along is the COVID-19 updates.
So obviously, yeah, people know a lot about what's going on with the coronavirus, specifically about the school side of things. I think everybody is quite aware. We're trying to comply with three main focus objectives right now, and that's a continuance of learning. We have classroom teachers throughout the entire district working to accommodate students, obviously outside of the school. We have pre-K to three continuance of learning packets that are being delivered by our bus drivers. We have food that is being delivered pre-K through 12 to families that have indicated that they could utilize that. And we did that through a survey. We, so those are two objectives, the continuance of learning and feeding. And the third one is soon to start to provide some childcare, starting tomorrow on a limited basis at Rick Marcock. As directed by the governor's order. So we're in the process of putting those things in play. We've got a lot of resources currently deployed on the technology side and copying side. So that's where we are, what we've heard. And again, I think many people have received updates on the governor's through his press conference. And we've received updates from the secretary of education, most recently framing out those three required objectives. Food, continuance of learning, and childcare as a ma- major emphasis. It's extended currently through the week of April 13th. I think most of us know that it's likely to extend much longer than that or longer than that. I guess I won't put much in there, but longer than that. And we're again kind of staying in this mode right now. This week, starting Monday, was the big push to include the academic component and getting packets out to our students. We are utilizing the technology that we have. Classroom teachers are doing a lot of innovative things to reach our students. We've had, on Mondays, we drop off food and we also have been dropping off the academic packets. Again, our transportation and nutrition service folks have really stepped up. And the organizing and planning of that through Gary Marcus's office has been awesome. And there's been some innovative, you know, folks on the bus saying hello to people, some students as they travel. So we've been able to do that. We currently are in a pay status. We're working to pay all of our current employees. One, because they're working, doing a variety of tasks behind the scenes and on the airwaves, et cetera. And those that, and as I said earlier, those are actually, we have many that are on onsite providing those services, which we'll see continue. Got a question, Bridget?
I have a few questions, but I want to let you finish because it looks like, it looks like you might have more to tell us. But yeah, I have a few questions.
No, I think I'm good. Again, there's just a multitude of things out there right now. And we're continuing to try to figure out where we go next. There, we have a regular scheduled Zoom meeting with superintendents along the Champlain Valley. We've had numerous conversations with, with other superintendents in the executive branch as well. Several, you know, individual calls with the secretary of education and some of his staff. But, you know, we're all trying to figure this out, including how do we hold public meetings? And we're kind of sad to be in this particular state, but we're also trying to be respectful of community, respectful of board members, and also just trying to be able to get out information as the calendar year goes on. So I hope people are understanding of our, of us trying to figure that out.
So just to be clear, we're planning to have school plus through the end of the week of April 13th at this meeting?
Well, April 13th is the start of the week, so that, that would be the, the week of, and so I don't, whatever.
So we're back to school that week or we are?
No, that's what, that's what the current guidelines are. At least the secretary and the governor are saying that's, that's kind of the next window. We'll kind of check and see where we are. We're hopeful that all of the things that you hear about the infectious rate and curve maybe is better than what they might forecast and we'll be, we'll be in a better place by the end of that week of the April 13th week. But we, we don't know. We're trying to again, just take it day by day and deal with a lot of the things that are coming. We do have vulnerable adults that are exempted from working, that are over 60 or have a multitude of, of immune deficiency related matters. So we're dealing with that as well. And we're conscious of our workforce right now because we've got a lot of people deployed. Nutrition services putting out, in some cases, 800 plus meals, nutrition and the academic packets, and then, then childcare coming on. And as numbers drop in certain areas, or they get asked not to come anymore through the health department, then that number, we're worried about trying to make sure we can still meet that, those, those objectives. So, so far, so good. And, you know, again, it's also trying to keep people, you know, positive and supportive emotionally. Because we have a lot of people that are working hard, but it's in a very different environment.
One question I had is how many children are we expecting to provide childcare for at Rick Marcock and who is providing it?
Yeah, so it would primarily right now, it's going to rest on our schools out employee, employees. We don't really know what that number is. We sent out a survey today that allowed exempt employees to be able to sign up for that. These are individuals that are healthcare workers, you know, all the critical list of workers can, can ask. So we just sent out to our families in South Burlington, our South Burlington School District community about that need. We haven't gotten that back. What we did have, and again, this is a little bit complicated, we've had some different agencies working with us. Department of Children and Families and Let's Grow Kids, which is a marketing, marketing group, advocacy group on early childhood. They were taking the names of, of folks that wanted daycare. And then AOE was trying to meld in there too. So it's been very messy. And so what we've done to date, which is what's starting up tomorrow, we've done to reach out to the names that we received and just said, do you still need childcare? So that's what's starting up tomorrow on a very small scale basis, probably three or four. We do have to pay attention to the number of individuals in any one room. You can't have more than 10. So we've got, you know, it could be eight students and, and two adults, obviously. And then if we have more, we're going to have to figure that out. So again, Gary, Markris, Lee Lanfier, Karen Dantrip, and working on kind of figuring out all of those particular logistics with that.
That sounds like quite the challenge.
I'm sure there's other questions and concerns out there too, but.
Yeah.
That's a snippet of a lot.
And so is the plan still, I mean, are, are teachers in the building? I feel like there's a mix because, you know, we obviously, we saw teachers on the bus to a certain extent. Not a lot, but I have looked at the bus on Monday. And then it feels like a lot of videos and things are being done from their homes. What is the status? Are we asking people to stay away? Are we asking people to, to end, just so we're clear?
Yeah, so we, all teachers currently have been asked to telework, right? So they have, and so that's the bulk of our, of our staff are doing the things that they need to do to prep. Again, at the pre-K to three level, some of them have had to come in to get the things that they need or direct somebody else to get what they need. And then four through 12, classroom teachers have been able to make connections through online, online related situations. So they, and either getting them information, et cetera. So that's, that's been the, the big piece. As far as other adults coming on board, again, there are some who support staff have been helping with nutrition and transportation. Those are some of the adults that have been coming around. We're trying to keep that to a minimum. And I think important to note that people are trying to abide by the rules, but also provide the necessary help where areas like nutrition and transportation and, and academic packets. So we have strongly encouraged teachers all telework. Our office staff, all of our offices are pretty much all teleworking. We have call forward activation happening. So if somebody calls the main office at any one of the schools, it will bump to somebody else. We're not quite up to speed on that at the moment. And then everyone in the district has the ability for a phone call that comes in and a message gets left at your voicemail. It triggers to a, to an email message, so you can listen to it off of your email. So those are all the systems that are currently in play. But like many, we're, we're working through how to figure out how to be more electronic than in person. Again, a lot of the teachers are awesome at that. And I think it's some of the people like myself, or the old timers that are trying to figure it out. But it's, it's working well. Again, we're sad that we don't, can't see our students, but you know, a lot of really hard work. Administrators, teachers, staff, nutrition, transportation, schools out, our office people, I mean, the list goes on and on. Our IT people have been pumping in the hours. Our ITE people have been pumping in the hours to make links available and really help as much as possible. So I know I missed some names there, but I, this is an all hands on deck. And I'm really, really appreciative and, you know, thankful to have such a dedicated staff.
Absolutely. I had two more related questions. One was from a community member that we got on the board Facebook page. I assume I know the answer to this, but I just was hoping for a confirmation on what the answer was. And the question was why we are using the full size school buses to do deliveries of food and whether there is some smaller vehicle that can be used? My assumption is we just don't have a fleet of any other sized vehicle at our disposal. And for social distancing reasons, I would assume that we need to use those because there are multiple staff members on them trying to do those deliveries. But I wanted to just pose that question because we've gotten it online.
So there's a couple of things. And again, you know, Gary, Markris, and myself, we've talked about this. And I think as well as administrators, the buses are known entities to our community. And I think our families and our students recognize those big yellow vehicles. We own them and our bus drivers, we have bus drivers to drive them. So we can distribute pretty quickly using those resources. We don't have other readily available resources. We do have a couple of vans and we have been using those. Gary's deployed those into some places where we're trying to help get out other information at certain times. Other, other things to families that might be in need. But we're using the buses, we're using the bus drivers, paying the bus drivers. And so it's, it's a, I think, a way for us to be able to use a very familiar transportation visible vehicle, utilize our bus drivers, which a lot of our families and, and students have connections with. And you're absolutely right. It has, has room for us to put on the nutrition and the supplies that we need. And also allows us to have some social distancing for the three or four people that are on the bus.
Great. And the other question, I just was looking, I noticed that we did not have a superintendent's report. I just wondered, a sort of a related matter, was the principal search for Rick Marcock Central School. And what we, if there's any more direction on what we're doing with that, I know that we canceled, you know, sort of the activities that had been planned. And I didn't know what the, what the outlook was for that search.
We're, we're working through that too. We initially had a process set up for this past Monday for administrator interview, administrators, parents, staff, community to be able to do an interview with our candidates. We pushed that, given that we were trying to start up everything on Monday with all of the academic component. We didn't think that was going to be appropriate. We also have candidates that are currently out in the field too, trying to do their very best. So Pat Phillips, who has been chairing the, the group, the, the process, I should say, has, I believe, we've got some tentative, a tentative schedule right now for next Monday. I know I did see an email come in a little bit ago, like not that long ago. I'm not sure whether that was just giving us a heads up or whether that was a change. So we're trying to keep that moving. But we're also at the same time trying to be sensitive to how we provide the opportunity for inclusion of our staff, our community, and our administrators as well, to be able to get the candidate, the best possible candidate. So right now, from what I understand, unless, again, I'm looking at Delan, I don't know if you have received anything more. And right now, I believe it's on for, for next Monday.
Okay.
Bridget, Bridget.
Any other board members have questions? Yeah?
Bridget, it's Elizabeth. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Just a quick one. Alex is not on the panelist, so if we could just ask Steve to promote him as well.
Yeah, I'll need to stop sharing for, but I'm happy to do that.
Okay, thank you.
And then there's a couple of questions as well, Bridget.
Yeah, I see the questions. They're related to other items on the agenda later in the meeting. So I see Margot, I see your question, and, and Ms. Retina Basan, I see your question as well. We'll get, we'll answer those questions when we get there.
And Bridget, I did have a question on, to David, on the childcare component. I'm, and, and you may have answered this indirectly, but is there a reconciliation of, between closing the schools and then kind of reopening parts of the schools for, to provide more limited childcare?
That's right. And again, this is all connected. Gary, Lee Lanfier, and Karen have been working on, along with facilities, through Gary, to open up a certain location and put in place a cleaning schedule, et cetera, to make that happen. So again, this is in response to the governor's directive to provide childcare, which is directed at schools. So we're trying to abide by that and give parents and guardians that opportunity. Does that answer your question, Elizabeth?
Yes, thank you.
Any other board questions with regard to COVID-19?
No, I'm good. Thanks. I'm good.
Okay, any questions from the public on this agenda item before we move on? Okay.
Bridget, could I, it's Elizabeth again. Could I just, I, I know, you know, everybody's in a little bit more reactive mode right now to an evolving situation. But it, it would be helpful at some point, I, I'm sure it would be helpful for the administrative team, but to sort of understand what the ramifications are downstream of what some of the decisions that are being, having to be made fairly quickly without, you know, the most efficient decision-making process as well as just an understanding. So again, from a community update as well as from a board update, I'm sure that the teams that are onsite and working diligently are starting to understand what the collateral is going to be of delaying certain things, of standardized testing, of college applicant, I mean, I, you can go through a whole list of things. It might be helpful at a future meeting to, even if those can't, if solutions can't be identified, just understanding areas that have been impacted, so we understand that.
I think it's a fair, again, really fair question. A lot of those, we don't have exact answers to. I think it's important right now that, under the current process, we are able to count these days as school days. And that goes through, at this point, through the week of the 13th and awaiting further guidance. That's important to us because of the financing of what we're currently doing. And if we had to extend the days in which we've missed, obviously, then that would be a financial hardship for the districts and the community. So we're all currently in Vermont, you know, working through that, but want additional clarity as we move forward beyond the week of the 13th. As far as standardized tests, proficiency-based graduation, again, the high school, Patrick Burke and his staff are working through that with their teachers to do the things that they feel they can do to make sure that students meet the requirements. And again, we, I need, we need to be crystal clear that we are in an environment of learning that is not optimal. This is a continuance. We're doing the very best we can. But again, this is, we're not in an optimal situation. So we're, again, having to fill the voids as much as possible and do a lot of triage at the moment. But the, the objective here is to ensure that our seniors, our current 12th graders, are able to graduate. A date yet not totally certain, although we currently have the established date in June. We're going to continue to wait further guidance from AOE around how we continue to move forward with assessments like standardized assessments and those, and those requirements. So you're absolutely right, Elizabeth. More to follow. That gives a little bit of, maybe some, some clarity to those issues.
Yeah, and, and maybe lastly, I'm sorry, I keep interrupting on this one. I know Martin is on, and it might be appropriate to ask for any update based on the legislative activities that are going on.
Martin, are you there?
I am here, yes.
Do you know anything that we don't know about any changes to, either to education or to open meeting or any of those things?
Yeah, the House passed this afternoon, late afternoon, around five o'clock. In fact, I had, that's why I was late for the executive session, because I was there at the State House. We passed a couple of bills. The one that's most pertinent is H 681, which has to do with flexibility for elections, which could come in handy and, and maybe something that we can talk to Donakinville about, how that will affect the budget vote. I, I don't have a specific, any specifics. It, it mainly gives a lot of flexibility to the secretary of state to assist in, in having those elections run appropriately in consideration of public health concerns. The other, in, in 681, that also looks at open meeting law changes. And one of the relevant changes is they can be done, they're, they will be able to be done remotely without having to designate a physical location. There's other details as well in that, but that's, that's the other component that is certainly relevant.
Thank you for that update. Okay, any further board questions on COVID-19? Any questions from the public on COVID-19? I see nine, nine that have been typed in. And just one question that had come up, and I know that, that our, our tech support, who's been very helpful in answering some of the questions while we've been talking. I guess one of the questions that had come up, I just wanted everyone to hear. When we get to the point where we do want the public to have a chance to ask questions, will they be able to do it verbally? Will you be able to open up the audio so they can do that?
Yep, I, I mentioned to somebody, we're going to go to Tribe. Please be patient if we're, as we're learning, but we, I think that should be.
We should be able to, okay.
As long as their mics are working and on their end, we should be able to open it and they can speak in.
Okay, if you are trying to ask the question and you don't, don't hear us acknowledging you, typing would be the best way to get through. We are seeing typed questions at this point, for sure. So if, if we don't seem like we're hearing you, we probably are not. So we're doing our best. So moving along, item number six, the South Burlington School District academic calendar. And this is worn for action tonight. So this is the academic calendar for the 2020 and 2021 school year. So I'll, I'll open up to David and then we'll put the button.
Okay, so in your packet, board, you had the calendar. It's titled draft number two in your packet. And then I think recently you received draft number three, which is up in front and on the screen. No, it's, that's number two. That's not number three, I don't think.
Yeah, number two is up on the screen right now. So do we have number three?
While Steve does that, what we provided in your packet was draft number two. But following that, we administratively, again, trying to do a lot of things at the same time we've been working. We recognized, and I think, wanted to let folks know that we have heard you quite loud and clear around. Number one, a great appreciation for our ability to professionally develop, given kind of the current state where we are, recognizing the need for instructional, as much instruction time next year. This calendar, which is the 2020, 2021 calendar, we are putting back in, in draft number three, putting back in, or, or removing, I should say, six late starts, early dismissals. Okay? And basically, what that, what that does is it will go more towards one TLC per month as opposed to two. Again, none in August or June. We also have some parent in services that we have heard loud and clear that we wanted to include them in some of those. But again, that doesn't add anything. And again, as I said earlier, we know that many of our families are under pressure and juggling a lot at home right now. So we hope that this indication of reducing the number of late starts and early dismissals can help families. We also want to maximize, as I said earlier, instructional time in the coming school year due to the spring school closure that we're currently under. We have a lot of work ahead of us in areas of personalized and proficiency-based education. However, we are confident that we can meet our educational mission without these TLCs for this coming year. Okay? So version three does remove those and makes those changes delineated. So I would certainly welcome any question that board members have. This is, as Bridget said earlier, is worn for action. Even though we are in this particular period, we are still getting calls and questions about the next year calendar. I think many people are looking and planning, hopefully positively, but we do see this as a need to get this done. So I don't know what questions board members have.
David, could you, could you reconcile what the board originally saw on the first recommendation between both the number of in-service days and the number of late start, early release days?
Yeah. So in your, in your packet, I'm not going to be able to calculate that number quick, but you had essentially two in every month with the exception of August. So you had two in every month.
And those were late starts and early releases, not in-service days, but late start, early release days.
Late start, early dismissals. That's right. Again, August has a lot of in-service in them, but we're talking specifically about either a late start or early dismissal. So we have two in the month, we have two in the month of September, two in October, November, one in December, two in January, two in February, and two in April, two in May, and none in June. The new one now drops one in September, drops one in October, keeps November, keeps December, drops January, drops one in February, drops one in March, and drops one in April, and drops one in May.
Actually, in March, it looks like it adds one in March, because the number two that I'm looking at has none in March. It has an in-service day on the 19th, but it looks like the one I'm looking at on the screen is green on the 12th. So that looks like it is an early release, late start day.
That's right. I think we're, I think we actually dropped the 12th, I think, in this one. So that March date would drop them.
It would still just be the 19th would be a full in-service day, and the 12th would not be an early release.
That's right.
So that would be basically draft four.
That's right.
Okay.
So that's the, that's how we got to six last days. Now, again, my math might be off now with that one.
I think it's, I think it's actually seven if you've dropped March.
That's probably, that's right. You know, I'm slow on my math uptake here. So seven.
And in-service are all the typical days?
Correct. Again, these, these were specific to late starts or early dismissals where parents needed to find, you know, resources for childcare or whatever the case may be. Again, as I said earlier, we recognize that that has been difficult, and we also recognize where we are at this juncture in time and will likely go at least through April, could be into May. We're going to need instructional time to be able to work with the students.
Yeah, I appreciate that thoughtfulness. I've been advocating it for a while, and I know I expressed I was kind of torn when we had our updated discussion on TLCs, because so much good work is happening in TLCs. But I'm really appreciative in light of how much instructional time is being missed right now, that we're adding some of that back in, in the next school calendar. Are there any other board members with questions or comments? This one is worn for action tonight. So if there are any other questions from board members first, and then from the public, we should take those.
This is Elizabeth. I would say, I appreciate the work that David, you and the team have done to sort of reevaluate this. As you know, we had made a commitment as a board to look at sort of a three-year window with enhanced late releases and, or late starts and early releases, and we were coming to the end of that. I do, I think the community expressed some concern, particularly families and so forth, about kind of not having a contiguous schedule for their families or children that maybe their jobs or other commitments were difficult to accommodate. So I do appreciate that. I think, I think it's significant that there's a reduction of basically seven days. I would fully expect that as, you know, additional requirements or needs come down the pike, that that'll have to be revisited on an annual basis. But I think this, it reflects the three-year commitment that was made to enhance that. And then, you know, the practical reality of really looking at direct instruction and, you know, accommodating the, you know, the compromises families have made in the recent past.
No, thank you, Elizabeth.
There are some questions.
I'm looking at those questions, Steve, but it looks like most of them are later agenda items. I don't see any that are relating to this specific. Okay. I just wanted to say, there were a couple of questions, broader questions, that were not related specifically to this item, but more about the running of the meeting. The question is, is this meeting being recorded? So the public can view it at a later date. It is the, the sound, the audio is being recorded, and it will be available at a later date. And we'll make sure that the school district website reflects a link so that people can link to it and listen to it at a later date. Okay. Any other board questions about the academic calendar? Okay, hearing done. Are there any questions from the public regarding next year's academic calendar? Okay, hearing done. Do I have a motion to approve the South Burlington School District Academic Calendar for the 2020, 2021 school year?
It's Elizabeth. I'll move that.
And Brian here, I'll second.
Okay, and we'll do a roll call vote since we have no one in the room except me. So.
Aye.
Martin?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Aye.
Alex? Alex McHenry? Are we having trouble with audio with Alex? Alex, we can't hear you. Are you on mute?
He's not on mute.
I could hear him before Bridget, but maybe he could raise a hand if he has that function.
Answer a question. Type it.
Yeah. Alex, can you potentially just type a question or type, type I? I mean, the motion passes regardless, but it would just be good if we're doing roll call vote to have everybody's vote. Move along. So the motion passes with four votes. Moving on to the next item, consider the FY 2021 school district budget. I'll just note at the outset that we do have a lot of questions from the community, clearly, but we'll take a presentation from administration first and then board discussion, and then we'll open up for public question.
Thank you, Bridget.
Yep.
So board members, again, you have, you received this yesterday. So true confessions, you know, you have not had a lot of time to see a lot of the, a lot of this. Again, we have been working hard to try to pull things together, look at and evaluate a variety of components. I think one of the big ones is looking at enrollment. Enrollment, as you know, is continuing to increase in this district. And so when we look at resources needed to support the need, and this budget does that, this budget does also support the school district being able to meet its ends outcomes. And for those that are unfamiliar with our ends, it's about preparing kids to be academically proficient, have dispositions for, dispositions for lifelong learning, personal development, and citizenship. And so as we continue to work through that, we also need to be cognizant of the backdrop of the legal requirements on things such as, such as proficiency-based graduation. So this currently revised budget as of March 25th does that. I want to walk you through this budget and allow you to ask me some additional questions. Again, this is not worn for action. It is a discussion period. We recognize that we'll have other opportunities to bring it back, but we felt that it was important to be able to give you this where we are.
Can you pause for one second, David? Steve, could you possibly make this full screen, the slideshow presentation? It's kind of hard to read. There you go. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. So similar format, again, I want to reach out to Amity Denton, who has worked with me, also Gary Marques, although Gary's been very busy, as I mentioned earlier, between nutrition and transportation. But we pulled this together for you. This, this budget, again, similar format, recognizes a 6.8% increase in total expense. And then those components that are part of that, obviously, you have broken down in front of you at the 2.2 million benefits and contingencies for the three collective bargaining that still exist. And then the continuing, continuing service expenses, you see those broken out then by tuition agreements, stewardship, contracts, vocational, and lease payment obligations. It shows you some debt service reduction, again, similar to what we've had there before, and then a reduction in revenue, same as we've had before. Page three, reduction since March 11th. Again, I'm trying to be really conscious of who's been at meetings and who hasn't. So trying to walk you through this. So page three, I'll let Steve get to page three. Sorry. So these are the reductions since March 11th. We recognize the, some of these additional staff retirements, mobile software warning system, we've dropped, we've dropped one campus security position, and we've also dropped some additional money in supplies. And so that brings our total reduction to 254,196. Again, I've hit on this before, but I think it's important. Some important facts related to this particular budget, these additional changes does maintain the current programming. Again, we're on page four. Total expense increase is 6.8, as I said earlier. The tax rate represented, represented here is 9.74. And again, as I've done before, some key facts, 0.86% is related to increasing enrollments and staffing needed to support that. 1.27% for stewardship projects. Again, I've shared with the board throughout this process that we've allocated resources at the elementary. We've kept a smaller amount related to the middle and the high school, and we think we can keep that. Again, that's feedback directly from Gary Marques. 2.4% of the 974 is attributed to health, health insurance expense increases. 1.09 attributed to repayment of our deficit. Four percentage points are attributed to the CLA, and then 0.12 is due to changes in equalized pupil and property yield. Page five reflects those changes. And so the highlighted area now with the added reduction brings you to the 6.80 on the percent change on the expense side. Go down that same column, you see 9.74% on the tax rate. The upper right-hand corner, property yield stays the same, the CLA, that's where you see that change. Equalized pupils has been firmed up, a slight change from what was previously, you see, and the change. And then right down on the right column, you see what it would be on 100,000 assessed value of $156 on a 331, 331,556 condo would be 361 additional, and on a home valued at 336,10525. I do want to be clear here that the amount related to the average condo and the average home have changed in the city, and the city uses kind of those new averages. We think it's important to use the same numbers so people can go back and forth and make some comparison. So we don't change those. We probably will change those next year. But again, I want to be sensitive and careful to that. Next page, page six, again, highlighting some of the changes from the March 2nd. Communication total expenditures are down 1.6%. Tax rate decreased again a bit, or 1.48%. And then you have the recalculation that I just shared about the average condo and the average home.
David, 1.6 or 1.16?
1.16. Thank you. 1.16. Thank you very much for that correction. The next page is the, page seven is the budget summary in both revenue and expenditures. Again, those are reflected similarly on the pages that we've talked about, but this has more detail in where wages and salaries, health insurance, et cetera, all the way down to debt service. Page eight provides, again, just a little bit of a pie chart that we think is important. It articulates the percentage that's related to the biggest part. Again, we are a people business with teachers and staff serving students. So obviously, the biggest portion of our, of the, of the pie is related to salaries and wages. Then you see services, supplies and materials, equipment, and debt service and other. Page nine, again, for those that have been following us along several times, you see kind of the components that add into the 974. Bottom left-hand corner, equalized pupils. Again, you see where that's at for us. Proposed expenditures, estimated revenue, working way around clockwise. Additional from the deficit obviously is what I refer to as the 1.07. The yield set by the state decreased. Common level of appraisal increased the tax rate close to near 4%. Page 10 is the budget to tax rate changes that now reflect a little bit of this, the adjustment that we just referred to. You see up in the very top, the percent spending is at the 6.80. Far right top corner is the change in the tax rate, 9.74. And all the way down to the bottom, five-year average for both spending and tax rate. Spending 3.87 on the five-year, change in the tax rate, 2.56. 10-year average, 2.79 and 2.3 on the change in the tax rate. Next slide is a newer slide. Many folks have asked about where we are in relationship to other districts. So this provides you some information about equalized pupils. Remember, equalized pupil has something to do with growth and/or change of components within the growth. So for, for us, again, these are similar sized districts to South Burlington, South Burlington, Burlington, Colchester, and Winuski. And so this shows you where we are related to equalized pupil on the top chart. And you can see what's happened for our group along those years. Burlington, along those years, Colchester, Winuski. And so our equalized pupil growth obviously has been 2.06. You see Burlington has been down. You see Burlington has been down, Colchester up 1.27, Winuski 1.22. The bottom chart reflects the change or increase, increase or decrease in the tax rate by year on those same districts. For us, again, you can see where we have tracked on our tax rate. Obviously, this year at 9.74, pretty significant. Our tax rate increase average is 2.56. The average tax rate for Burlington is 4.69. Colchester 2.13 and Winuski 4.91. So again, put things in perspective on where we are. Again, a little bit of a backdrop of where our other communities are as our near neighbors.
David, it's Brian. I think the top average is mislabeled. That should be the average equalized pupil increase, right?
Yeah, instead of the five-year average tax rate increase.
Yes, you're right.
It should be the.
Yeah, that's right. It repeated that, that's right. Thank you, thank you, Brian. It should be the five-year average equalized pupil. Thank you for catching that. Does everybody, did everybody see where that is? That's on the top chart where it says increase slash decrease in equalized pupils. That's appropriately titled. But all the way down on the bottom of that particular table, it had five-year average tax rate. It should be five-year average equalized pupil. Thank you for catching that. Page 12. Again, we get into items that have not been put into this particular budget. These would be possible reductions. We've talked about this amongst our leadership team. These are not recommended.
But this is, to be clear, this is what the next level of reduction.
This could be, and I, we would further prioritize beyond, within this. And it, so again, it's not currently prioritized. But the top bullet is partial elimination of tunnel and high school athletic and activities. Some examples might be what's listed there at the middle school dungeon and dragon spelling team, skateboarding, art, math club, et cetera, high school art club, French club talent night. Again, you can see where those are as well. I'm trying to be a little bit sensitive to give some narrative because I don't think everybody has his view. I think some are on by phone only. So I'm giving probably more detail than some that are watching would care. Reduction of transportation, with the exception of special education and our tuition students. That would be 938,000. You know, 15 FTEs. And then reduction of some of our lumped in literacy, math, ITE mentoring program, again, was also listed in there, which also has pretty significant FTEs as well. So those are under possible reduction consideration. Again, administratively, we've not prioritized those. Again, we're walking a very fine line. We need these positions. These positions are important to us. However, we've listed those. The next one is what would it take to obtain level funding in this particular budget? So it would be a total expense reduction of 3.519043. Elimination ideas here would be, would likely eliminate all athletic teams and activities at both the high school and the middle school. And that we then, as you know, based on that pie chart, would have to make staffing reductions. And that would, we would need to take approximately 20, 29, or I'm going to just say 30 FTEs away. This would have major impact, again, on our current class sizes at the elementary. It would be well above our policy guidelines currently in G6 that is outlined. It would eliminate likely a team at the middle school, teachers across all of the programming, certainly at the high school AP programming and other really important program of study offering at the high school to get to the 2029. The last chart actually, I think, the last chart actually is a pie chart, which I don't think that one's included in this particular.
It's in here.
Oh, it is.
It is, that's a question. Yeah, go ahead on down, Steve, to page 15.
Yeah, so this again is a little bit of, but it's hard to tell. Again, that percent change, although significant, has major effect on the staffing and our ability to meet our ends, but I did provide that to you as well. Before I know, I've got board member questions, I expect. I do want to just address a couple of quick things. Again, some budget thoughts from me, rationale for where we are. Again, our five and 10-year average tax rate history in South Burlington has been reasonable in comparison with other districts. Again, I just provided you that backdrop, especially given that our student growth is more than many other districts. The lag in receiving state funding for our equalized pupil counts, I think, are significant in that they're a two-year lag. The fluid changes in the common level of appraisals in South Burlington associated with home selling above their praise value. Given the current state with regard to the coronavirus, we'll certainly need all our respective staff to help ensure students get back up to grade level proficiency. Making cuts in programs would significantly hamper our ability to meet our ends, as I said earlier. Making cuts in one area often has implication in other areas as a result of teacher-staff seniority. These implications can be significant with regard to retaining our newest teachers and staff. I've already reiterated where some of the big components of that tax rate are related is common level appraisal, 4%, healthcare at 2.4%, facility stewardship, trying to take care of our buildings at 1.27%, meeting our enrollment needs at 0.86. Again, this has been a very deliberate process. It's been ongoing for a long, long time, back to October, with many, many meetings and staff involved. I personally want to say that my staff, the staff have exercised due diligence in building a budget that I believe supports the association of our ability to meet our ends. And lastly, I do want to recognize some things that have come up. I know that some folks in the community have expressed ideas around making budget reductions in certain areas. So I'd like to just address some of those briefly. And many of those have been certainly highlighted by folks that have attended some of our meetings. And I'm sorry they can't be here tonight, as well as others that wanted to be. Some of the items that were referenced was about making reductions in purchased and technical services. And I think this is an area that covers importantly for them, for everyone to know, it covers contracts and service providers such, that provide special education and IEP requirements for our students. And if we reduce these, reduce these expenses, students' needs would not be met as required by law. Expense for negotiations, retirement actuary fees, HRA administration and contractual obligations that need to be met. But obviously, those are obligations. Our pre-k provider expenses are part of that. We provide those services, so just cutting those out is again a requirement. Under tuition, I know, again, there were some recommendations for reductions. State, we have state-required pass-through to tech centers that's out of our control. These are financial expectations, money that gets established that we simply pass through.
And to be clear, it's the student's choice if they go to a tech center and then funds passed through our budget to those tech centers.
That is correct, Bridget. The tech center obviously sets their annual tuition rates, is outlined by the state guidelines and student attendance by SBSD, has increased. And again, as you said, that's voluntary, but we set those. Tuition for special education and outplay students, again, that's a requirement. Special revenue funds, again, that was another area targeted for potential reduction. These numbers that are in the budget are based on current FY20 federal funds awarded. The grants are applied for in late May for the 2021 fiscal year. These expenses are directly offset by revenue that's often received. Next area was contingency related to three bargaining agreements. Again, we are in bargaining with three collective bargaining agreements and needing to be negotiated. Health insurance assessment by Vermont State Teachers Retirement for junior teachers increases with staff turnover due to retirement. This cost also rises, which is also out of our control, specifically in the district. I have a couple, just a couple more and I will be done. I'm sorry for being lengthy, but I do want to address some of those. Another area of possible reduction was for administration. As you know, we have five schools. Our three elementary schools have just one administrator per building with high numbers of students in each of those buildings. Our elementary schools are some of the biggest elementary schools in the state, with Orchard being close to 400, with Rick Marcott not far behind, and Chamberlain, again, right around that 300 and climbing. Most other schools have some assistance with numbers at 400. We do not, we have one per building. It is an area of concern, however, this budget reflects remaining at one per building. At the middle school, we have two. And we have about, we have close to 100 more students than any other middle school in the state. At the high school, we do have three administrators and an activities director and a dean of students. This is very consistent with what other, with other schools have that are similar. However, our school is probably one of the largest in comparison. When we look at other schools like CBU, we are far understaffed administratively. Even though what's listed at places like CBU is just two, they have house directors, which are administrators in the building, which is a pretty significant difference between our school.
David, we have a request for you to speak up, please.
Okay, I'll do my best. That's usually not a request, but I'll do my best. Elementary teacher additions was another one. Idea of reducing elementary teacher. Again, we are currently following our guidelines, as I said earlier, within our policy G6. Again, where we reduce, it changes significantly those expectations. And so we have made conscious choices around where we see growth and where we can move those resources. And this budget does reflect what we think is appropriate for us to, again, meet our ends, meet our class size policy regulations. Salary and wages, again, is part of collective bargaining. And again, that's something that the school board is currently involved in at the present time. And will remain consistent as we move forward. Substitutes, again, we have heard that, again, that's an area where we can perhaps reduce federal and state, or what we call family medical leave, or Vermont Family Leave Act requires us to provide employees, like many other businesses our size, that when employees are on leave, we obviously have to hire a substitute to fill the position. There's many qualifying conditions that would, that would qualify for us to be able to get us up. And again, we have seen some variability in that particular line item. And we've put some, we've put some work into trying to figure out how we can, you know, be watchful of how to keep that down. But again, this represents what we think we need to do that. Lunchroom and recess, I got just two more left. Lunch and recess was also brought up. And there was some question about that. There is in the budget book, the line for lunch and recess was incorrect for FY21. The amount for the FY21 is for the office and office aid slash substitute budget. And the office aid substitute line amount belongs to the lunchroom. A correction known online as well. Lastly, transportation, again, area was brought up. Why can't we see some savings and drop that? Again, I did identify that as a possible reduction area, but we continue to look at possible areas to be more efficient with our buses and transportation. However, we also need to balance student safety, specific to walking in certain areas where crossing certain roads are not suggested and would not be safe. We have many of those locations within South Burlington, i.e. Shelburne Road, Williston Road, Dorset Street. Some of you who live in the community and walk those areas recognize that. We also have to be very conscious of student safety and the ages as they do that. We have been a district and will continue to be one that advocates for riding their bikes when appropriate and/or walking, and we have a good number of those that do that. But I wanted to recognize, Bridget and board, that those were some of the areas that came in that were questions. And I did want to recognize that I did receive them and I did review them and have provided some feedback. Again, when I say I, it's also been along with some of my catering staffs, yeah.
So I'll open it up for board questions first. So board discussion and questions first. Board members, are there questions for David?
Yeah, if I could, first of all, just a technical matter. It looks like Alex McHenry is having difficulty with Zoom and he's wondering if Bridget or David could call him.
Yep, I can do that.
And then the second one, and unfortunately, this is probably for David, even though he's busy. I believe one of the slides was labeled possible reductions or something like that. And I'm wondering, are those likely reductions? You know what I mean? So if you had to fund at that level, is that the sort of action that administration would likely take? I know that nothing's been decided, but is that likely and not just possible?
I'm hoping not. Again, what I'm bringing forward with administrative input is what I'm currently suggesting. I think when we get into these other areas, I have more work to do around where that would, where that would rest. We have a lot of moving targets around enrollment and additional needs. I did list these as possible. Again, I think we need to be clear that we have collective bargaining agreements that I need to be able to give notice to people through a RIF and reduction process. Again, the union leadership has been very, very supportive and have extended the date for the RIF notice period. But at some point in time, I'm going to have to recognize some staff that need to be reduced if we don't get a pass budget. So you're absolutely right. I listed them as possible, along with some other areas. But again, based on the direction of the board, you know, I would be looking at all of those areas that I provided both in the possible as well as the other areas.
Yeah, I guess part of the line of questioning is I can see a world in which you were accused of catastrophizing by saying it would result in this many people being reduced. And so that was the question about likely. You know, if we were forced to go that route, is that a likely outcome?
Yeah, I certainly think so. I think the first, the top, you know, obviously, partial elimination of some of what I hate to see go away because it's such an important part of disposition and lifelong learning and citizenship or some of these activities. But again, for me, transportation is one around equity that I worry about. Where kids that can and those that can't get, you know, to and from schools or transportation. And then regarding literacy and math and our ITE, these are all of the things right now that are, have been major, major foundations for our district in achieving the outcomes that we are receiving.
And just to be clear, those math coaches and literacy coaches, are those coaches that are working directly with students? Are those coaches that are working on curriculum and are kind of coaching teachers?
So it's a little bit of both. I mean, when, again, it happens differently for some of them. But when a literacy coach or math coach who's on board, it may be they're working directly with a teacher or teachers. It may be that they're doing some model lessons with the teacher in their classroom with students. So there's a high level of variability. But what we know is in the, in the, in the ever-changing world of both math and literacy, the ability for teachers, again, I want to speak specifically to our elementary teachers, again, very gifted, but they have to cover all of the disciplines and try to keep up on all of them. And our literacy and math coaches have been instrumental in allowing that to happen. Our ITE folks have been instrumental, again, only three of them, three of them have been instrumental in ensuring the exact things that we're doing right now are in place. And so to the three of them, it's been absolutely critical. And as we ready children for the next steps, ITE and those math and literacy services that have helped teachers be really, you know, really, really competent are the exact ones that are helping us right now out in the, out in the world of coronavirus. Some of our graduates are currently actively in play doing that work. So again, those are just some quick highlights to those areas. But to answer the simple question to Brian, I think we would be looking at that top portion mostly where it would start to affect those outside of the school activities, which pains me because those are ones that are also critically important to the development of our students.
Yeah, understood. Thank you.
And, and just a quick request from those of us in the room. If, when you ask a question or comment, just for folks, other participants, we all recognize each other's voices, but if you could identify yourself. um, uh, just so that other participants know who's commenting, that would be really helpful. Uh, are there other board questions or comments?
Uh, yeah, Bridget, this is Elizabeth. Um, you know, this, uh, I, I have to be honest, David, this doesn't seem like a, a very big haircut off of what we saw at the last meeting. Um, and I'm, you know, I'm not a fan of um, arbitrary cuts um, from, you know, to budgets that we, we obviously felt that we had approved to take to the community. But um, uh, you know, one of the challenges we have is uh, we have different information today, all of us do, and there's certainly been a financial impact to the community. Um, and there are schools, uh, most of the school districts around the state have approved budgets that are likely to be a little painful on a going forward basis. Um, the tough thing with this is that if um, if you look at, I've, I've had an opportunity to kind of look at a number of the um, uh, suggestions made by various community members and, you know, I go back over my fifteen years and I look at the, uh, you know, in, in my former life, I, I managed a, you know, a number of profit and loss statements and balance sheets and the levers that you could pull. Um, what I've learned serving on the school board is the levers you can pull in uh, in a, you know, a, a corporate setting are fundamentally very different than you can in a public education setting where eighty percent of your um, your expenditures are wages and benefits. And um, it, you know, it really looks to um, headcount, right, and there's a limited amount, even with nickel and diming, you can get to on the twenty percent. That's kind of the operational side. Um, certainly that's a, a more desirable place to go from a management standpoint. But as you look at the eighty percent of any district's budget that's in wages and benefits, you know, largely the, the benefit side of it is largely healthcare, and I know we do have a um, public records request outstanding on some additional healthcare items. But I did want to, I, I want to highlight that briefly and then get back to the, the wages component. On the statewide contract, um, and, and I think uh, you know, this information on the public records request can be shared on the uh, district website as needed. But um, I can't speak to what other districts have done um, relative to what they budgeted, but the DFR did approve the premium rate increase of twelve point nine percent on the premiums. And that is the most popular plan that's selected by most um, education employees around the state. Um, the other districts may have negotiated different benefits so that they didn't need to look at such a significant increase, but one of the um, elements of a healthcare that's currently in place that will not be in place based on the statewide award is that um, the current contract has employees paying the first dollar toward out-of-pocket expenses. And with the statewide contract, that now becomes the district's liability. Um, with the employee paying the last and a reduced dollar amount on out-of-pocket. Um, and then there's uh, there's assumptions made on the utilization rate. For instance, on a, on a family out-of-pocket expense of five thousand dollars on average um, with the um, around the state, that utilization rate might be sixty-five percent or so. But from a district liability standpoint, um, we, we would be obligated to pay up to, I think, the employee last dollar represents about fifteen percent of that. So I'm ballparking that a little bit. I don't have it exactly in front of me, but the, the district would be liable for about eighty-five percent of that out-of-pocket um, in that particular scenario. And then um, uh, the mix of um, employees in different districts of those choosing single plant, single plans at a lower premium and lower out-of-pocket versus two-person and uh, parent-child and family plans also can affect what your total increase is along with um, new employees as well. So I, uh, I did want to share that as um, some background for um, I think what will be forthcoming in terms of that public records request. And then as far as wages go, I know there've been some specific suggestions made on um, specific job areas or titles. And um, I would say, having participated again over that, my period of, you know, tenure on the board in a lot of interview processes, uh, one, some of the um, uh, the um, salary guidelines are dictated by the salary schedules that are negotiated in collective bargaining. So based on the number of years of experience and the, and the educational achievement levels of individuals, um, where people are placed on that salary schedule uh, is really dictated in collective bargaining. Um, I, I know that there are a lot of efforts made to really look at, um, you know, doc, uh, detailed job descriptions, scope of responsibilities, look at comparable salaries within Chittingen County, uh, and then look at the eligible pool of candidates for those assignments. What doesn't show up in some of the um, specific positions that were highlighted is some of the positions um, may or may not include healthcare benefits. So you may see a position that looks like what you, uh, an individual might perceive as a very high salary, but there may be um, twenty-five percent of that which is um, uh, paid by the individual toward healthcare benefits because the district does not pick that up. So there's a number of nuances to those. Um, again, uh, that it, it would be very difficult to respond to individual um, questions or comments on specific positions. I do appreciate the comment that I think we always need to look at being disciplined about um, bringing on folks and I, I think um, m- my experience has been the, you know, David and the administrative team and um, and other hiring committees really do look at um, what, you know, what uh, a uh, com- comparable salary is for the scope of responsibilities that we're asking of individuals. And again, the fact that we have a, a fairly high retention rate within the district and a, and a uh, very seasoned population um, of employees that um, continue to deliver great results is, is indicative of that, the associated expenses with that too. So it's a, a- again, I don't want to belabor that point, but I just wanted to give a little bit of background based on um, some of my experience, um, you know, looking at this over, over many years.
Thank you for that, Elizabeth. Any other board questions or comments before we take some questions and comments from the public?
Uh, yeah, this is, this is Martin. Um, and yeah, I, I don't think this is a sufficient haircut right now, um, as using Elizabeth's terms. Um, I think we do have to look to cut a little bit further, and I do understand that that starts to get into the programming. As far as the possible reductions that have been presented right now, uh, I'm very uncomfortable uh, with the concept of eliminating transportation. I could see certainly um, changing the uh, how far out uh, from particular schools one has to be in order to be able to take advantage of the bus services. And I do know that there are some streets that you can't cross, but I do recall at one point, a number of years ago, we did look to uh, expand the how far out uh, people had to walk into school. And we did get some pushback on that, but I think that that could be revisited if that's going to save any on the transportation. Um, but I, I don't like the concept of actually eliminating transportation. I think there's a lot of equity issues involved uh, with that. And there'd be a lot of absenteeism as well, potentially. Um, as far as the other two, I, I think we, I think you seriously need to look uh, at cutting some FTEs. Uh, I, I just think that that's going to have to be necessary to be able to get this budget passed. I really am concerned that we will not be able to get this budget passed, uh, given the fact that uh, many community members are self-employed and, and are not making any money right now. Uh, other people are on unemployment insurance for the foreseeable future. And all this is going to be happening when we're asking people to vote for this budget. So I, I do think we need to uh, do some more cuts. Uh, I think uh, you did provide some explanation, certainly for some of the recommendations or suggestions that we've heard from the community. Uh, I think it's more important certainly that the administration uh, look at what cuts would do the least damage to the programming. And again, I would avoid this concept of cutting uh, transportation. So that's kind of where I am. That's a comment, not a question, but I, I do want to see a little bit more.
I would just like to say, I, I agree that we should perhaps take a deeper look. You know, we have another, another meeting to, to, you know, before we have to really uh, start to make a decision about this budget. I do want to balance that though with the idea that we're going to be in a bit of a hole in terms of where kids are after uh, the disruption of this year. And that's not going to be an easy thing for us to climb out of. And I just want to make sure that we're, we've got, I mean, obviously it's going to be on the forefront of everyone's mind as we think about, you know, potential places um, that can be cut back. We just have to be careful um, that uh, that we balance the real need that this whole um, pandemic is creating um, in the district. Um, both academically as well as the social services that we're providing to students and that the state expects us to provide through the schools, students, um, that are seeing significant impact um, from all of this. So that's, that's really all of my two cents for tonight. Um, Alex or uh, or Brian, anything further from you before we start to take community questions?
This is Brian. I'm all set.
Alex, have you, uh, are the technology issues worked out? Are you able to to hear us and speak?
Alex.
You'll need to log in.
Alex, are you on? Yes. Yeah, we can. We obviously can't get you on the, the meeting, but go ahead. Ask your question and I'll do my best to repeat it.
All right, well, I'm, I'm dealing with some exaggeration with the new tech college, but I'll try and say, oh, yeah, I, I, I kind of coming somewhere, Martin's coming from, is that I, I think that the proposed suggestion that you made tonight would not be sufficient to get this budget passed. And I uh, you know, really like we, we're in a tough situation with a lot of unknowns with the coronavirus, but um, we need to look at further reductions for our next meeting.
So people, people who couldn't hear Alex because he's on my phone, um, so I'll re, I'll repeat his response. He um, responded similarly to Martin, said, I echo a lot of Martin's um, comments and that uh, it's not going far enough. Um, again, is that fair, um, Alex?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, then there are several questions, um, and um, they seem to come up in uh, the question and answer dialogue, not necessarily based on time, but some combination of when they were logged and um, how many likes they've gotten. So some of them get bumped up uh, to the top, so my apologies if you put your question in right away and it gets answered a little bit later. But without getting completely chaotic, um, I think it makes sense to start at the top and work our way down um, that list of questions. Um, and I think I'm just sort of looking around the room, uh, whether uh, does this uh, approach make sense to um, give people a pause for a second if they would prefer to just speak their own question? Um, or if they don't want to, then I can happily read what they've gone ahead and written. Um, so uh, I'll start with Eric Post. Uh, Eric, do you want to say your question aloud, or would you like me to go ahead and read it for everyone's benefit? Or it's more of a comment, as you say? I'll go ahead and read it. Uh, Eric Post said, not a question, but a comment. I would rather err on the side of supporting our education system, keeping class sizes reasonable, offering a breadth of student activities, maintaining one of the best, most qualified staff rosters in the state, than degrading, degrading the quality of a South Burlington education to save a little cash. I don't like the idea of my housing costs going up, but if it's for the benefit of the community as a whole now and in the decades to come, as our students enter the world, I'm happy to accept it.
Eric, you are now allowed to speak too, if you would like to speak on the, on the webinar. You've been unmuted.
Okay. Hearing nothing from Eric, we'll move on. Uh, next is Katie McCabe. Katie had a couple of comments. Um, first she said, uh, I just want to take a minute to thank the board and the community for the work you are doing together. Uh, to make, and all of these are moving around as I'm speaking, so it's making it extremely challenging to read that. Is there a way to freeze them in place? Because I was in the middle of reading Katie's comment and then it's getting bumped down in the queue as other comments are coming in and as people are liking or uh, or not other comments.
Can you hear me?
Now, yes.
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 Oh, great. I can just read it if that's helpful.
That's very helpful. Thank you.
Okay, um, I'm, I'm really nervous actually reading this, um, but hi, I just wanted to thank you guys. I know this is really hard work. Um, and uh, as I said in my comment, I'm both in a young and new teacher at South Burlington High School. So I'm one of the FTEs that would be, be vulnerable. Um, but I'm also in the midst of purchasing a home here, so I'm someone who's, who's uh, monthly housing costs are also really vulnerable. And to be honest with the COVID crisis, I'm, I'm pretty afraid of both. Um, so I really do feel the tension between uh, South Burlington is the best functioning school I've ever worked at. I really hope to get to send my kids here and it feels like the first school I've ever worked at where I could work for a long time. Um, but at the same time, I'm also terrified of, you know, it being affordable. So I really feel that balance and I, I just wanted to throw out there that I've, I've read through the budget really carefully and I act, I, the factors, I think that David Young is balancing. I, I think it really does strike a balance between those three things. And I'm really grateful for the work that everyone is doing to try to, to try to strike the balance.
Thank you for that comment, Katie. Um, okay, um, next I have in my list after Eric, I have uh, Sriram Srinivasan. Uh, Sriram, I know that you have a lot of different questions that have come in. We're just having a bit of a challenge because the, the question and answer dialogue box, as I said, all the questions are kind of moving around, and so it's hard to group them together appropriately. Uh, so if you would like to make a comment or ask some questions, um, we would uh, like to yield the floor to you for the next moment. Uh, Sriram Srinivasan?
Sriram?
Yes.
Yep. Okay, they're, they're unmuted.
Okay.
Hello, good evening, everyone.
Hello, we can hear you. Yes.
Um, so I know some people have a hard time with my name, but uh, everyone calls me Srini. It's R I and L is part of my last name. Uh, first of all, you know, thank you for the opportunity to um, you know, participate here. And uh, you know, as a community member, uh, give the board and administration some feedback um, as well as engage uh, in a meaningful discussion on how we make sure that we uh, help the board and administration put together a budget that has got a good chance to pass uh, first week of May. So that's the primary objective for a lot of us. Um, and uh, I think a couple of the board members have already expressed their concerns around what was presented tonight. Um, and uh, it sounds like we are going to go through a, one more round um, to further look into opportunities. But I do want to, uh, you know, before we get into some of the details, I do want to, um, you know, would like to thank the board and the school administration for managing this very, very trying and tough environment that all of us are in. And I think the community appreciates the timely, thoughtful and, you know, much needed support you're giving it to the students and families. So, and I think much of the state and the country and the whole world has been challenged to do uh, some extraordinary things here. And uh, it's good to see all that hard work uh, right in our community and uh, very much appreciate the teachers, staff and the administration for that. Um, so I, I guess on the, um, I will specifically focus on the proposal. Um, and uh, the proposal we have shared uh, a couple of versions to date. I think it's, uh, we shared the first version about a couple of weeks ago. Uh, since that time, we have made some revisions uh, based on uh, Uh since that time, we have made some revisions uh based on uh further information and knowledge. Uh this is really an attempt by the community to help the board, um you know, move this thing along. I don't think any of us want to see a no vote um in in May and uh, you know, uh what I call us uh lead to unintended consequences for the community and for uh teachers, administration, et cetera. I don't think we want to see that. So it's really important that we engage uh in good faith and spend time to listen and appreciate the ideas and have a dialogue uh uh that's a two-way dialogue. Uh it's unfortunate that we are participating in uh through the Zoom and uh, you know, some of the nuances are going to get missed uh from both sides. Uh but we have to live with that for now. So um we have identified uh opportunities and let me just emphasize this. We have identified opportunities that does not involve significant headcount reduction. Okay, and uh based on Mr. David Young's comments, maybe on some areas, we don't have a complete picture and maybe we are off, maybe we don't have the full opportunity rightly defined. But largely, I think we have gone at uh a concept of where in any organization, when you are going through a tough time, uh you look at three different things. One, you look at what you're spending today and what is what what we call as a discretionary spending and figure out a way to run your organization uh with less. So that's one category. The second category is all of us like to increase our annual spending year over year for a number of reasons. You question that. Do you really need it? Okay, can you live with what you had in last year? So that's the second concept. The third concept is really uh around, you know, do we need, do we need to focus on our future needs now? Can we defer that? Can we optimize the organization? How best do we serve the community and the students with with maybe uh fewer resources than what we what we would like to have? So those are the three concepts that we have put forth and uh they translate to roughly about, you know, three point three million dollars. This is on top of uh roughly six hundred thousand dollars Mr. Young had proposed at the last meeting. Apart from those ideas, I think we have identified another uh uh three quarters of a million dollars. We believe these type of uh significant reductions are necessary. We need to be sensitive uh to the teachers, the staff. So unlike, you know, what has been floating around in the social media the last uh week or so, we want to make sure that the community really wants to focus on a very broad, thorough approach on several items that translates to significant savings. So um I'm not sure whether we'll have enough time today, but I would like to uh kind of revert back on what Mr. Uh Young commented about specific items and uh confirm or share what our understanding is and why we are focusing on those specific items.
Thank you for that comment. Uh can I just ask, uh when you refer to we, who you're referring to specifically?
It's a it's a large group of us uh who have uh focused on this. So um, I mean, we're happy, we're happy to, you know, engage with you later, but there's a lot, there's a large group of people here, so.
Uh David, do we have other comments? Uh this, I believe, is what David was referring to when he was uh running through things that have been identified through questions that, you know, the board and the administration have received via email um over the course of the past couple of weeks. Um I think he went through just about um all of them that were in that list and and had some explanation or comment on them. Uh I don't know if you have further comment now, David, or if we want to get into further comments at the next meeting or or what your thoughts are.
Yeah, again, I think it's really important to listen and I'm 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 working really hard at doing that. Um I did, Bridget, you're correct. I did want to share what was provided. I thought it was important to not address some of those things. So the 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 areas that I talked about earlier from purchase services, you know, tuition, special revenue contingency, uh were those areas that I addressed that I think on on face value, people see that those are large items and they see that there's been some um fluctuations over the years. And I think when that happens, I do think that there are, you know, folks in the community that say that's why, why can't that be, you know, trimmed a little bit. But again, as I said, particularly in purchase services, a lot of those are legal obligations to provide under federal mandated um educational services. Similarly with tuition, um yes, I agree on contingency that that I'm not trying to put it back on the board, but you know, contingency in negotiations is squarely with the board and the teachers' union, the administrators and support contract agreements. That's certainly not something I can particularly have have have, you know, uh any sort of result to. Um that's directly in correlation with wages and salaries. So um, yes, I think, you know, we can continue to look at certain other areas, um one of which I outlined in possible other reductions, but it's really, um, you know, I have to, I have to provide the legal requirements. Um certainly, FTE counts are, I think, have been highlighted to me by this board over the years that I've been here, which is seems like longer sometimes than 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 others. But, you know, I have been paying attention to try to advance the district, meet the ends and also keep that bay FTEs. Things when I have to add security people to support a school environment that's healthy. When I have increasing enrollment, unlike many of my colleagues around the state, I have to be watchful of class sizes, not just class sizes, but also physical spaces of those sizes. I have some buildings here that don't have high amount of space to put more bodies into. It just doesn't work. So I'm I'm conscious of our policy and I'm also conscious of the space in which they can go into. So again, I I don't want to rehash a lot of those. I do want to recognize and say that I did look at those and I would be happy to have more of a conversation with um, you know, the folks that that came up with those ideas um to talk a little bit more like we do with our budget advisory group that often have come up with ideas and certain other reductions, only to find out that some are more able to be adjusted than others. So again, I think that's probably enough for right now. Um I did put a lot of effort and work into it. I know at least a couple of board members are feeling that I didn't trim. Actually, I think the word was haircut. They, good thing we're not on Zoom because they know I don't have any hair or very little of it, but um I I recognize and hear what board members are saying and uh and I'm hearing what some of the community members are saying as well.
Excuse me, this is uh Srini here again. Am I still on mute or can I?
Oh, we can hear you.
Okay, so I guess I guess uh my my suggestion are uh what I would like the board and the superintendent to think about is, like I said, there's a number of people, you know, who have looked into this. And uh, you know, we have, we have just not looked at one year spending. We have looked at the last five year spending and trends and historical uh growth rates. We have looked at a number of factors here. So we are not just arbitrarily picking line items. Things that stand out is what what we have called for. So let me, you know, let me take a couple of examples here and I'll just say that, you know, these are the things a typical organization does during tough times. You know, year after year, you're, you know, the school district is spending half a million dollars on computers. You know, I have no idea on what type of computers you buy, how many you buy. But when you want to reduce costs, the fundamental principle in an organization is whatever you are buying, you don't buy it at the same frequency when you face a time like this. You differ. You change the replacement cycle. You replace things only when things are broken. So these are what I referred to. I I'm just picking that as an example because, you know, a lot of us, you know, have worked in professional organizations, public as well as private, and we are used to this type of thinking. And I'm not sure when was the last time the school district and the board faced a similar situation, but these are extraordinary times here. So I just hope that the board and the administration appreciate uh the fact that we are trying to look at a broad set of items to help this budget uh get a yes vote in May. Um and I think it needs to reflect the times we are living in right now. I don't think any, you know, you, you know, I understand that you have a lot of factors and on contracts, things that are already baked in as part of contracts, et cetera. You know, a lot of us maybe don't understand it, but I think by just looking at at a high level and doing doing the process of subtraction and elimination, I think we can figure out what is within your control and what is not within your control. I think we can figure that out within a, you know, decent uh accuracy. So we are just asking for an opportunity to fully engage in these details and make sure that we have a two-way dialogue on this. So I use the computers as an example. You may have a number of reasons for why that may not be acceptable or that may not support what you what you need academically, but this is what organizations do. So I would, I would urge the board and the administration to think out of the box for the next revision of uh cuts and not necessarily focus on headcounts. I mean, we are suggesting a different set of headcounts than what uh the administration is suggesting. So uh I just, I just, I just hope that, I just hope that, I just hope that, you know, the community and the board and the administration set up a forum or an environment for us to actively engage and have a two-way dialogue on this.
David, did you have another?
Yeah, again, I don't want, I don't want to read about everything. I think it's, I I Kate, I I I hear what uh is being shared. I do think again, new board members, community members who haven't been following, we have been at this. Again, I've been in the district for a long time. We didn't have a stewardship plan. We identified things that needed to be addressed. And we have been a district that has been diligent about either putting them forward or delaying them or sequencing them from our facilities, from our buses and technology. We made a decision around technology back in the day. We made a decision to go with a laptop device, so we didn't have, so we could get rid of all of the desktop devices. Very different than many other communities did to save us some money while also making an investment in the in a technology that currently today, although not optimal, is certainly paying off to support our students in in the state that we're in. So um we have, we have many examples, I think, that would be helpful to be shared uh with the group and others that would like to know about how we go about it. Most people don't know, we keep our buses for 10 years and based on trend data, we see that the services, um, you know, significantly escalate and cost us a lot more money. So we've been diligent about putting things in place, which I think might be helpful to the community. Again, I want to reemphasize that we are in the education business and the education business is one that is critically important and it's driven mostly by people. And people providing that service is critical to our success of our children into the future. But again, I want to, I want to reiterate, I hear what's being said and um I think there's opportunities for some additional feedback from me. Again, as we go forward.
Yeah, Da- David, it's Elizabeth. Could I respond as well?
Yeah, we can hear you, Elizabeth. Go right ahead.
Yeah, um uh first of all, I think any any feedback like this is always very helpful to get and if if um, you know, if nothing else, it gives a perspective sort of on what people are thinking about and what's uh, you know, what's on people's minds and obviously, I think everyone knows since the initial budget proposal was developed, we're operating in a completely different environment. So um the notion that even the previous budget that that was on the original um ballot reflected current times is, you know, uh is a stretch. So it, I do think on behalf of the board, we do appreciate any community feedback. Um I'm looking specifically at the the community proposal that was made or that is framed as a community proposal. And um I think consistent with my prior comments, I think about seventy percent of the proposed reductions are linked with headcount. It may be new hires or it may be um specific suggestions for reductions in certain areas. But uh I I think what David is saying and what I would concur as a board member is it, sometimes it takes a a fairly lengthy conversation to dig into some of the items, even though they sound innocuous. And I think the computer example is a good one, where over the years, um specific decisions were made uh based on the recommendation of administration and the support of the board to go to leasing for at least uh computers, for example, so it would spread out the payments, um smaller payments on an annual basis with, I think we were looking at four-year leases in general, and we may have extended those over periods of time that reflected the the um life of the equipment and uh and so forth. So there, I don't want to propose that I'm answering that question specifically, but I do want to say there there were specific rational decisions made in the past that recognized that area as well as many other areas that have been brought up uh that certainly can be looked at again, looking at extending leases further and and um things like that. But uh there were many decisions that were made that incorporated thinking that would minimize um budget impact on an annual basis and extend the life of assets like computers within the district. I'll stop there.
Yeah, and I would just like to add to to Elizabeth and David's comments that um I think more dialogue is necessary so that everyone understands the implications if if some of those suggestions were taken. So some of those suggestions would really require policy changes. So as David's kind of implying, it would require probably a change in our one-to-one policy, uh which is a policy that we took on well before my tenure on the board. And the further implication of that is that some students in the district would end up having computers um at at home and some students would end up not having computers at home. Uh so there are sort of follow-on discussions that would need to be, you know, so that everyone would understand exactly what the implications were of each of these potential um recommendations. And some of them, because of the way they're labeled in the budget, it's hard to understand that some of them are things that are simply requirements. You know, there are simply um staffing requirements to comply with um with, for example, and again, just one example out of the air, uh special education services. If we have a student on a specific plan, we have to meet those requirements and that requires some headcount. So it's not as easy as as just deciding where those FTEs come from. There are certain ones that are really tied to requirements, either for specific students or for specific, you know, state mandates that we we have to have in place. So I do think it's a longer conversation than we'll be able to, you know, go line by line through tonight. Um but I think that we can probably prepare a little bit more discussion for uh perhaps next meeting, David, or I don't know if there is, it's something that we want to do differently than and just saying that we'll do it next meeting.
I don't know. I mean, I I I, again, listening and uh, you know, I have some, you know, administrators that, you know, I need to connect with again. Again, I'm listening to feedback from board members and from the public and also trying to navigate with a lot of other hardworking people as we navigate through, you know, the current situation. So um unfortunately, we can't stop time to the future. We have to think about a calendar. We have to think about a budget and we we've, we've got to do those things. So again, I'm open to figuring out how we might do that uh, you know, in the best way possible. Again, a public kind of opportunity to to listen a little bit more. Probably have to do it by Zoom, but you know, I'm open to trying to figure that out.
Uh this is, this is uh Srini here again. I would just say that um, you know, um we've been listening to uh the Senate lead, Tim Ash. Uh he's got a conference call every evening and provides the, provides an update on what uh the Vermont state is doing with respect to the virus and giving guidance. I think they have come up, come out with some uh specific guidance today uh that relates to what the school district should be expecting and what kind of federal uh support um uh will be coming. And I don't, I don't fully uh have all his comments, but he is definitely giving a guideline of level spending to a number of agencies and organizations, I believe. Maybe Martin can confirm that, but he does, uh he did, he did focus on that tonight and uh talked about a very limited amount of money coming to help the school districts uh in this cycle.
Thank you for that. Um I don't know that we'll be able to address that fully tonight, uh given that that's new information to us. And Srini, thank you very much for your very detailed comments. I do want to be respectful. I do want to be respectful. Uh, there are about 39 other comments right now that are waiting to uh to either people who are waiting to make comments or, or uh ask questions. So I do feel we need to give someone else a chance to ask a question. Um, Dan Albrecht uh very rightfully said that just a moment ago that he was one of the first people to uh raise his hand to ask a question. So I would like to move to him next. So Dan, uh, and Steve says that you are unmuted if you would like to ask a question.
Yeah, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thanks very much. Um, just a couple sort of thematic comments, not really getting into the two specifics of exact line items. The world keeps changing since the last time you guys met, two weeks ago, whatever that was. My concern is, well, there's the larger concern of sort of a philosophical one of having a school budget. If the first vote defeated 57%, which in South Burlington is pretty shocking. Um, and then rightfully, you asked Mr. Young to bring back a different budget. And he did, and it's trimming overall from 11 point something, 11.22 down to 9.74. It's kind of a, again, sort of a, what's the word? It creates a real image problem again. So that is going to reflect poorly on all of you on the board and, and indeed increases the divide between the school itself and the larger community that it serves and by which it is funded. So that's sort of one issue. So I agree with some of the other school board members there who are indicating the need for further trimming of the haircut. And then I'd really like to see about knowing the current budget situation with no athletics going on, no buses being run. Uh, obviously, some school lunch activity going on, but presumably less than before. Uh, hopefully, no more spending this current fiscal year and next fiscal year and probably the fiscal year after that on anything to do with building a new school because we're going to be in a recession for another good, you know, year or whatever. And I guess I'd like you to think about this school district is lucky in an odd way and the public is as well too because I suppose we had passed the budget of 11% and now we were faced with Corona, knowing what we know now. We've got a chance to actually be a little bit more uh responsive to an evolving situation. The other districts have already passed and done with. The other reason to be responsive to the situation is if you think the budget situation in the state of Vermont, and more importantly, people's personal budgets, like all the people are going to lose their jobs or hours cut back for the next year. You come back next year with the, even with a level budget from next year. And so you've got to think about the glide path. You think it's, you think the situation's bad now, it's going to be worse in the dead of winter next year when you're working on another budget. So you've got to start serious trimming now to lower expectations of what can be provided with the money that comes from the taxpayers. Lastly, I know everybody's worried about keeping their jobs and see the young teachers commenting here. And, and I get it, you know, um. And it's too bad the union's not at the table here because what creative factory owner, creative factory owners do, for example, is, you know, they cut back the hours but keep people on so they can keep their healthcare benefits or whatever. So if there's a way to do that or something that's creative so that some stability is maintained, you know, um, people give up voluntary increase, voluntarily give up any increases they might get just to be able to keep their job and their healthcare. Yeah, so again, larger, broad themes. But you got to start cutting now because it's going to be even worse next year. So you've got to start managing expectations now. And lastly, just again, don't spend any more money on, for the next year or two, on thinking about building a new school. The, the taxpayer is just, it's a new economic reality, so.
Thank you for that feedback. Did you have any questions before we move on to the next person with questions?
Um, I guess to some extent, if there's any way, what parts of the personnel budget you do have discretion over? I understand the teacher's contract is one thing you really can't do anything about. But any other position that you do have discretion, even if it's cutting back some hours of administrative staff or, or uh whatever, the, the library, you know, it's, it's like, it's like what they're, what's happening all across the world. People cutting back hours or, you know, doing what they can to keep their business open, but, and the lights on, but cutting back to save money. So anyway, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, moving along, um, the next person on my list is John Stern. Can you unmute John Stern, Steve? Hey, John, you are um open for comments and questions.
Um, you know, I apologize. I put so many uh questions in the uh little chat box, but uh thank you for your time and for this opportunity to ask a question. Um, Mr. Young, I have a twofold question. First, Mr. Young suggested that, or put numbers up there saying the equalized pupil growth is much higher, but um that does not equate to a teacher-to-student ratio. Uh, when I run the numbers, uh, I see that South Burlington has the second lowest out of the five, Essex, uh Burlington, uh, things like that. We, we have the second lowest student-to-teacher ratio, and yet we have by far the highest salary, 5.4% over the second highest and 11% higher than the next, which is, look, who, you know, if I was a teacher, I'd love that, but it's, it speaks to why our teachers are not going to leave if we can't hold, even if we hold it level. So my question is, what are the details or how can we get the details around the um, this weighted count for specialized students? And how the budget is reflecting specifically their needs? If, if that's a growth area, why aren't we reducing in the non-growth areas? Uh, that is one question. And to be honest, I have completely forgotten uh my second question. So I'm going to let it go for the night. It's been a long day, been a long day. But I will say regardless of COVID-19, I feel like the language, again, last, last time we met, we were talking about language of fear mongering. People will leave, et cetera. This time, the language is we're trapped and there's nothing we can do. So we talked about federal mandates. There is some federal funding. I'd like to understand where I can find details on how we're chasing that federal funding to reduce the burden on South Burlington uh citizens. I guess that is my question. I'd like to understand that. And I would like to understand, what are the repercussions when, when we don't meet certain federal mandates? Because in some cases, the, the repercussions are not so hard. Look, we want quality. There's no question about it. But we have a spiraling, out-of-control cost structure. That's the language you're using. And I, I think we have a real problem here and we need to get this thing under control, regardless of COVID, but especially because of COVID-19. I'll go back to regardless. So those are the several questions I have. This has probably been recorded. It might be the best way to grab them. If you don't expect answers right now, I just wanted my question. Thank you. My dog's going to start barking, so you might want to mute me again.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, I think, uh, yes, I mean, that, those requests for information. And to be clear, the equalized pupils does not just reflect um some kind of special pupil. Equalized pupil count is, is a statewide number um that the state calculates for us based on data that we have to provide, uh, based on numbers of seated students, uh, students at each different level, uh, those kinds of things. David just uh raised his hand to say something.
Yeah, I think um, you know, to John's point, there, there are a lot of intricacies that go into the education funding formula. I know many people, you know, do not uh see the connection to some of the, the levers that are currently in play with uh ed funding. One, I think, is common level of appraisal, which is often misunderstood. And I think you've heard a lot about it, but I know that's a question, the, the common level of appraisal, particularly um around how homes are selling and appraised values within your community um are selling. That's certainly one that I think people need to just look at around those levers and those changes because that can happen pretty quickly. And again, it's an asset, obviously, assets to our individual community members when they see their home values go up or down or when they sell or choose to sell or buy. And then the other that was mentioned on is equalized pupil. And Bridget started and did a good job there. But um this is different than the seated number of students. So um again, we have, and I have shared and can continue to share with, with the board kind of where we are with enrollments and projections and based on our demographers work. But equalized pupils are different than the seated students that you see reflected in our, in our enrollments uh that, that I provided. Equalized have adders, so a high school is a little bit more than an elementary. Uh, English language learner is a little bit more. Uh, you get fractions uh associated with that. So all that put in, and those are fairly uh fluid in, 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 in communities. And so it does represent in part seated number of new students and then some of those changing uh metrics associated with them as well.
Thanks for that, David. Um, Margot Rogers, are you still with us? And would you like to ask a question or two? I think you had a couple of questions. Margot, are you there? I think Steve has unmuted you. From our end.
Can you guys hear me now?
Now we can hear you. Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Um, thanks for the opportunity. Um, and I echo a lot of what uh others have stated as well. Um, and I appreciate that the board has, uh, uh, or several members of the board have indicated what I think we're all thinking, which is, given the current situation we're in and the fact that we know that the schools are going to need repair and there's going to need to be some funding associated that, with that, virtually none of which or very little of which is included in this budget now. And will have to be someday soon, um, at least for some kind of repairs. I guess there's a couple of things. I feel like we all recognize that there needs to be significant cuts and yet I don't see that happening. And I appreciated, appreciated what Elizabeth said about the schools and how they differ from other institutions, corporate America and so forth. But I guess I'm not sure I agree with it entirely. There are certainly businesses, I'm in one, where 90% or 80% of our costs are personnel costs. And while we, n- nobody ever likes to cut personnel and that, and it's hard to do and we never think that we can do with less and often it's challenging to do that. I've been in corporate America long enough. I've been through many, many rifts at our corporation uh over the years. We've had virtually no hiring for 15 years. And we have far fewer staff than we used to. And we figure it out and you learn to prioritize and get stuff done. And you know, it's challenging to do and we're smart people and the teachers are smart and the administration is smart. And it's hard decisions to make, but I feel like it can be done and I wish that there was more willingness to do it. It's hard. I get it. And nobody wants to do it and nobody wants to say we're cutting, cutting employee counts or whatever, but I think we're smart enough to figure out how to do it.
Thank you for that. Um, you had another question, Margot, specifically regarding tech centers. Did you want to ask that one as well?
Well, yeah, I had a couple of questions about why there is so much increase in several line items. One is um the, I recognize what you said about what's included in the professional um services, but there's a large increase from last year. The same is true of the contingency fund and also the line item for tech centers. And so my question is, why are there increase, so much increase in those line items? And in particular, the line item about the tuition to tech centers, which by the way, I'm very much in support of, given that two of my children went to BTC and found the programming fantastic. Um, and there's a need for technical education. So I'm very much in support of it, but I'm curious about that. If there's more students going to the tech ed programs, how is that reflected in the reduced need to educate them in the South Burlington schools? But I'm also interested in the other line items. Why are they so significantly increased from last year?
Yeah, quick thing on tech centers, again, not to get into every detail here, but tech centers. I mean, we are seeing an increased enrollment. Again, our high school, again, our incoming next year eighth grade class or current eighth grade class going to the high school will be the largest in, in the history of the South Burlington School District. So um we are seeing increased enrollments. And when you see increased enrollments, you have additional choices. And so we're, we're um likely seeing increased participation in the tech centers with large class sizes. So we still need our staff to be able to support the programs that we're proposing to support and the students like and need to ready themselves. And then also we need to pay for that pass-through money uh for the tech centers. Uh, under the other components that were mentioned, um, you know, I think, again, here's, here's another opportunity for deeper understanding. And again, I'm, I'm not in the corporate world. Uh, I've been in the education world. But there are only so many levers I can pull. There's a lot of levers in education that are mandatory, that have either been legal requirements that have been passed down through the legislature, proficiency-based education, you know, to get ready for that. Um, OT and PT and special education laws that come down to say how we need to do those things. Uh, safety and security, uh mandates that come down to say what you will do, what you need to do to protect our children. Those are, those are levers that I don't necessarily have the choice to, to not pull. They're already pulled for me and I need to make sure that I have the funds to support them. And when, in order to do that, I've had to make some sacrifices as a district to turn down the other lever, levers. And again, we're highly driven by staff. And uh, again, it's difficult when you don't have um the full decision-making methodology at your, at your hand. So again, not to get into those, again, I think there's some, some takeaways too. Uh, so I think that's important uh to Margot's uh questions.
David, this is Amity. Can I also interject a little bit on this?
Sure.
So Margot, with regard to your question on contingency and the historic spend of $65,000, but the proposed $580,000, um, when we budget under contingency for the salary negotiation figures, those monies are then moved internal budget-wise, not necessarily spent as an expenditure because they have to be expended out of the object um and function in which they really come from. So it's a true placeholder. It's not always where the expense is placed. So it does look a little strange that it doesn't look like we're spending that contingency, but in reality, the internal budget gets transferred to cover the expense in the actual salary lines that it is um pertaining to. So that's one area that you asked a question. Um, and the second is uh why with the tuition, students going to the vocational tuition centers increasing, why not the regular ed expenditures decreasing? Um, we're not talking about a very large contingency of students. I think we are sending somewhere in the vicinity of about 25 students to the tech centers. Some of them are only going half-days. Some still get some of their base courses through South Burlington Schools. So it's hard to say that you can reduce when you maybe lose two or three students out of a class, you know, uh, uh, four classes a day, but they still attend two classes a day. So I hope that helps to clarify that, those two questions for you.
Okay, Margot, did you have any follow-up question? Okay, um, if not, um. Okay, Margot, did you have any follow-up? Sorry, Steve just said he unmuted you.
Um, I don't think so. I guess I still struggle with, we can't reduce headcount. I, I, I just, I get that there's some uh contractual obligations, but I, I don't think I agree that. but I, I don't think I agree that headcount can't be reduced and still maintain the level of quality that we have.
Okay. I think the next person that I have on the list that keeps jumping around is Gwen Bruins. Gwen Bruins, B-R-U-N-S. Is she still on? I will ask her question out loud, since I don't see her on the list of participants at the moment. What is driving SB budget to be so much larger than other districts this year?
Well, again, I did outline that. Again, these are part of the levers that I talked about before. I mean, I don't, I don't have control over, over the lever of, of the CLA. I don't have, you know, major control over the number of, you know, families that are moving in or moving out of South Burlington. I don't have control over, you know, overall big expense healthcare. But certainly, the big drivers are certainly the CLA. And I think people need to certainly recognize that, that differing in, in other communities.
Could I stop you right there? Because what Kathy Murphy had asked a question pretty early on and it had gotten pushed down in the list. And it was to, and a couple of people had sort of followed on to say, yes, I also have the same question, which is if, some folks don't exactly understand the CLA. And I know we've explained it a few times in the past, but new people come every time. So it would be helpful maybe if we could just talk about the CLA. I don't know if Amity wants to, if Amity could explain CLA.
Let me start and then, again, I would encourage people who do have questions around the, the components that make up our budget. But the CLA, again, stands for Common Level Appraisal. And it's, it was enacted back in nineteen ninety-seven, when we went to a statewide education fund. And it's a method of ensuring that each town is paying their fair share of educational property tax to the state fund. Again, it was enacted in nineteen ninety-seven, passed by the legislature as Act Sixty. And then obviously has a driver to make equity and equalization across the entire state. So those are the levers in play and we have to pay into it or, or receive, depending on what's going on with those particular percentages. I don't know, Amity, anything you wanted to add to that? Or Gary?
No, and just the, the fact that the, the number, the lower the number below one hundred percent, the higher tax base, we need to raise property taxes to, for our equalized portion into the education fund.
And so I know there was a question, I'm not sure if it was online or one that we had gotten via email, but there was a question about why, you know, other districts have low CLAs as well. Some of them, why didn't their budgets go up as much? And there are so many different factors in their budget, it's hard to comment necessarily on those districts.
That's right.
But if their CLA is low, it may have been low last year too. The big comment for us this year is that the CLA changed so much in one year. So we've seen it change. I've only been on the board for four years, but I've seen it change every year. And it's usually changed on the order of, you know, half or one percent at the most. And so to have an almost four percent jump in a given year is a pretty big change in that factor.
I think you're, you're on point, Bridget. And that's, that's the key is that when you have major fluctuation and change, it has major effect in one year. So there are other communities that are awaiting reappraisal or have been. And they've been, some of them have been in the seventy-eight point something for quite some time. But when we, when we made that change, again, pretty significant, that all loads onto it. Now, again, when, when it does self-correct, those homes that were undervalued and get reappraised, those local homes that are now appraised higher will, again, they'll be on a local individual basis. And that is all part of the, the overall equation. But again, right now, I don't know if it's fortunate or unfortunate, at least unfortunate for the school district picking up that difference. But the fortunate is, is that assets within, at home assets in South Burlington are selling well above their appraised values, albeit then giving more of an asset to the South Burlington community for home values, if in fact they ever so, so choose to sell. Again, or, or again, they continue to, to, to gain an asset.
Okay, so you, so CLA was part of, I'm sorry, interrupted you to break you of that CLA question, but that was part of your answer to Gwen. And I didn't know if there was anything else you wanted to add. It's hard to really comment on other school districts' budgets specifically. I think David spoke to it a little bit with regard to how fast our enrollment is growing versus other districts as well in some of those comparisons. So that's, that's also a challenge in terms of the overall headline work.
Yeah, you've got CLA and then you've got some different drivers like our equalized. But if we were to, and again, if we take on, and I'm ballparking, we take on a hundred more new students, you would think your equalized pupils would go up by one hundred. That's not true because it's a two-year roll, right? So it doesn't factor in any one year. So you'd only get half of that in the first year. That's not exactly how those calculations work, but pretty close. And so we did see an increase of enrollment, but our equalized won't reflect that until it catches up in the year two. However, CLA is an, is an annual change and we saw that significant this year. So again, I'm happy to talk more with people about some of the levers and files that are moving. And again, Gwen asked a good one, but that's part of the reason why, why we're changing so much is because of that.
All right, the next one I have on my list is from someone called Vermont Nurse, BT Nurse. I see that they're not in the list of participants, or they weren't a second ago when I checked. The question was similar to one of Margot's questions about contingency, which I believe Amity did answer already. So I apologize if, if we are skipping over it, but it's something that we've already addressed, I believe. So if BT Nurse doesn't get their question answered and would like it answered, please email the board or email the superintendent, one of the two, and we will try to get you a better answer. Let's see, Galaxy S eight plus? So why are we still looking at any increase considering the economic, okay, I'm sorry. Galaxy S eight plus, are they still in the participants? And are you still hoping to ask a question? I think they've gone, so I think we'll move along. I think I'm gonna just take one quick pause. We have three different raised hands and I want to make sure that those folks get a chance to get into. I'm also, I'm, no, but I'm gonna go through the list of questions as well and, and just clear out some of the ones we've already answered. So if we've answered them live and I should, I'm, I'm just gonna ask a technical question. Should I hit dismiss of the ones we've already answered? Or just, if I hit answer live, will that just move it aside so that I don't see it anymore? Or how will it work? I just need to clear this out so that I can be clear about what. Okay, okay, great. Okay, so there, so Ian Herrick has his hand raised. Can you unmute Ian Herrick? He has a question.
Yeah, he's partway down.
He's at the top of my list of, of participants in the meeting.
Someone read his comment?
Let me just see if I can find if he's typed a comment or whether he just had.
I can read this one.
If you could do that, David, that would be great.
Yeah, so from Ian Herrick. I'm a teacher in another nearby district, but I live in South Burlington. Oops, it's moving around on me here again.
Sorry.
But I live in South Burlington. I've taught in multiple schools in other states and went through cuts to teachers and support staff. In each case, it hurt students. It always resulted in classrooms that were more hectic and students having a harder time getting the emotional support that they need. I would hate to this, see this happen here.
Okay. We will move along. I'm just looking down my list for questions that we have not answered. Annie Lou, Annie, are you there? And do you have a question or a comment? Did you find her, Steve? Okay, Annie, you're unmuted. Do you have a question or comments? Okay, I see none, so we're gonna move along. Oh, Annie, if you can unmute yourself, we've unmuted you from RN, but we can't hear you. I'll give you just a second to try to do that.
There I go. All right, can you hear me now?
We can hear you now, thank you.
Okay, okay, thank you. I just have a few comments. I've whittled it down somewhat from what I previously was going to say tonight. But I'll, I'll indicate what I do want to continue to, to say this evening. As serious as the city residents were three short weeks ago when they voted no to the education budget proposal, they are even more serious now. On March third, voting day, city residents saw that the school district was seeking a seven point nine six school budget increase, which would have led to an outrageous eleven point two-two tax rate increase to the taxpayers. Despite your hard work on these figures, in the past couple of weeks, I, I, I see that, that you've only managed to reduce the proposed budget by about one percent. That, that's really not good. That's not enough. The world has changed drastically in this, in the past three weeks. And we must all be humble and realistic enough to know that many people are struggling and the luxury items that we once came to expect can no longer be realistically attained, at least not in this coming year. People are truly suffering with fear and uncertainty about how their financial stability. You, the school board and the superintendent, say that you want to provide twenty-first century learning. Well, this is your opportunity to do just that. Prove that you can be flexible and innovative during times of instability and crisis. You're placing it down just one percent is, is insufficient. You must get down to level funding and show how resilient you can be in the face of necessity. Keep in mind the slogan, "We're all in this together," and act accordingly. As I said, times have changed. The community is wide awake now and watching very closely. The school district must take responsibility now to bring its lofty desires for extravagant increases down to a level where the spending is sensible and certainly no more than what was spent during this past year when the economy was roaring and most felt so much more financially stable than they do now or will in the volatile uncertain future ahead. I would hope that the level budget wouldn't be the end of our students being able to continue to receive a great education. The school district must stop the scare tactics and be flexible enough to make meaningful changes that will best serve our students, the teachers, as well as the taxpayers who pay the bills. If you, meaning the school board and the superintendent, choose not to make the required reductions, then it will be up to the community to take charge by voting no. The community will continue to vote no if you don't make more significant and responsible changes immediately. And I don't mean to get rid of teachers. You can do it without getting rid of your teachers. You can do it without getting rid of any, any personnel. You can get rid of it without taking away the transportation. Those are scare tactics. It's pretty obvious. Do what's right and do it immediately. That's my, that's what I had to say.
Thank you for your comments. I just, I, I, I appreciate your comments, Annie. And respectfully, I do just have to say that I don't believe that the district is employing fear-mongering or scare tactics. Our, as we've discussed, eighty percent or more of our budget is wages and benefits. And the lever to decrease the budget further is to reduce staffing and that has an impact on students. No one has said that we would go to a level funded budget, but the reality is that a level funded budget would simply require significant cuts in staff. And that's not, that's not fear-mongering, that's not a scare tactic. It's just simply a fact. And as a community, we will have to decide whether we're willing to accept what the consequences are of those staffing reductions, if that's, if that's what we insist upon. So I'm sorry, but I, I, I probably should have not said it, but I felt like it, it's been brought up a few times in a few different ways. And I don't feel that at all, we're trying to fear-monger. But we are trying to say to the community, we have to make a choice as a community about the level of staffing. And that directly, it just simply does directly impact what the level of services we can provide to our students are. And so I, I'll, I'll leave it there. We have, Jessica Edwards has a couple of different comments. Jessica, are you still on?
Hi.
Yeah, we hear you.
Hi. I, yeah, I, thank you so much for making those comments that those. I am a speech-language pathologist in the district. I work at the elementary level, so I'm at kindergarten to fifth graders. And I have the opportunity to work in students, both in the general education classroom and with our special education students. So I get to see like a nice breadth of all students across the school. And I am sitting here with a lot of anxiety from some of this conversation, just because I know from like being in the trenches, how much having adequately funded schools with adequate staff directly impacts those students getting the supports that they need. We have witnessed at my school is Rick Marcot Central School. And there has been all this new building coming up, so a lot more students have entered our school. And it is pretty stark, the need of those students entering our school and how that really stretches our resources to serve them appropriately and adequately. And I think some of my comments were made of like how much student outcomes do impact our broader community down the line and in the future. And as we're transitioning in this very new COVID climate, there is so much anxiety and work around how to support our students adequately in the long run. And I'm very just nervous that, thinking that we'll be able to support our students at the same level, even though they probably need more support, given less. So I am, I am actually resident of Winuski, so I'm not a resident of South Burlington. I pay property taxes and understand high property taxes and those concerns and do take those into consideration. But I just want to give that perspective from like what it feels like from working in the school and the, you know, wanting to make sure that we also are still considering the needs of our students through all of this. And having a lot of worries about how we will actually meet those needs and trying to work really hard to do that and asking for some of that support as well. That's it.
Thank you for that, Jessica.
Yep.
The next person I have on my list is Heather O'Clare. Heather, still on the participant list, Steve? Okay, Heather, we've unmuted you if you would like to ask a question. You need to unmute yourself. We can't hear you yet. Heather, do you want to, Steve, can you unmute her? Okay. I can read Heather's question. Why can we not do a freeze on pay raises? The state has done it with state employees in the past during hard times. I believe this is a hard time and we need to do a freeze. Also, we can do more students per teacher as well. David, do you have any?
No, I mean, again, it's hard to know. Again, across the board, I think we have a lot of state functions that are happening. I can't speak specifically to all those state functions. I think a lot of us, you know, certainly, you know, are happy that we have state services. I mean, we're talking about a very fundamental expectations about educating our youth, you know, and it's not something. and it's not something that you can take pause on because one year is so critical to our students. Again, students that we want to make sure have all the opportunities to be successful and to move back into South Burlington and work here. And again, we have many examples of some of those that have graduated from here are scientists and engineers and lawyers and doctors that are in, in highest regards that when you go to, to a doctor, you're gonna, you're gonna know that they have had the foundation and the learning that is so critical that you're gonna put your life or your loved ones' hands in. So, you know, I think, you know, again, that's just where I'm at with, with related to that.
Thank you for that. The next question I have is from Denise Walter. Hey Denise, we've unmuted you from our end. Would you like to ask a question?
I think I might have unmuted myself. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Awesome. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. Ms. Fitzgerald mentioned that some of the positions that we saw on the budget line may not include health insurance in their compensation package. How many positions would this cover? And then I have two comments.
Amity, do you have that information to hand, or is that something we would need to get back? That is primarily administrators are under contracts that do not include their total compensation contracts for the most part. So that's just administrators. They are responsible for paying for their own health insurance based on their overall compensation.
So to clarify, that would include like the assistant principals, the principals and the deans? Anyone who's not actually in a classroom?
So that would be the principals. So the high school principal and assistant principals, it would not be the dean. It would be the high, the middle school principal and assistant, and then the three elementary principals. It would be myself in that mix.
Athletic. At the high school.
Yeah, I did the high school principal, assistant prin, to assistant principals there.
Athletic.
Activities director, yes. Yeah, so those are the ones that again, that's, they all pay for their own insurance.
Okay, so, so basically not a whole lot. It's such, it's a lower number than a greater number. Would that be a correct statement?
It's certainly smaller than the teacher or.
Okay, thank you. And so I guess I have two comments. You know, I do want to thank the board for the effort that you're putting in on this. But with that being said, I think that only by, by offering cuts at the extreme ends, either it kind of is an all or nothing proposal here. It's either a level bed budget or a proposed budget. And, and for me, that's not a trust builder. It's, I don't have, I don't see the superintendent's desire to present a budget that can pass, and I think that's the big impasse that we're at right now is finding a middle ground that the community can go forward with and that the, you know, the education system can thrive on. And also, I just, not to suggest fear mongering, but to compare what the South Burlington rates are to other districts, I don't consider that to be helpful because comparison is just kind of like the devil's advocate. I mean, if you have to make yourself look good by making someone else look bad, again, I think that that's an unproductive situation. For me, this is kind of boiled down to not just about the money only, but I feel this has become extremely adversarial, and it's, it's time for both sides to work together to make this community affordable and attractive so people want to come here because they will get a good but affordable education. And Mr. Young, I just sincerely hope that you can find some middle ground between the level budget and the, you know, the drastic cuts that you presented tonight. And thank you again for the time to speak.
Only quick response to Bridget was just again, often people are asking quite regularly about what are other communities? We had that last meeting several times about where.
And we've had several emails asking about other communities. That's part of the reason we did ask as a board actually for some of that comparison work to be done because we've been asked that question by other community members.
So I didn't want to, I'm, I'm not trying to be deceptive. It was kind of a recommendation I'd done in the past. And, you know, it does show some of the fluidity that's happening in other communities. So when you think you're alone, that was the purpose and the objective of that. And they are all districts. We did, they're, they're districts in, in, right, right around us. And so that was important, similar, similar size Burlington and Colchester to us. It was the obvious a little bit smaller, but that was the reason for that.
Okay. Uh, next person I have on my list is Mary Doane. Mary, are you still on? D O A N E. Steve does not see her in the participant list anymore, so I will read her comments. It's a comment rather than a question. Mary says, "I have put my comment in the wrong section. My partner and I moved to South Burlington over three years ago. Part of the appeal of living in this area is the school district. It's disappointing to hear the district may be cutting teachers just as we are getting ready to start our family. I don't want to imagine what the reaction might be the next time this community faces other big challenges." The next person I have on my list is Holly Ruel. She was one of our elementary school principals. Is Holly still on, or did she drop off? Holly's response was related to Denise's question. Holly, I don't know if you had any other things to add because you were, you were basically answering Denise's question, which we just took at the, at the higher level. Do you have anything else to add?
No, just that my other question was, how much would it take to reduce the budget by 1%? And I think Gary answered that, that it's over $500,000, which would be seven FTEs. And my only other wondering is, since we are in the business of education, one of David's thoughts for cutting was athletics and some of the clubs, which, which are not the education part of our business. So just wondering what the board thinks about going in that direction versus the FTEs.
Yeah, I, I can speak to that a little bit. This is Elizabeth. You know, first off, I think we, we kind of serve two areas. One is to deliver public education in South Burlington, and the second is to do that at a, a price the community will afford or can afford and agree to. So we, we kind of balance that line all the time. I, I look at clubs and athletics and, and a number of the co-curricular activities we have, in many cases do support curriculum, but in many cases really contribute to delivering the ends that the community participated in developing in terms of how we want our, what, what we want our students to be leaving the school system with in terms of the, the four primary ends. So I, I think as with all things within policy governance, the board will really look to administration's recommendations and, and consider those and balance those between, you know, the two goals of delivering that public education and delivering on our ends policy, and again, at a, at a cost the community can afford. And when I say afford, that, that is with a, with an affirmative nod vis a vis a, a budgets, a budget support. So I, I don't feel like the board really has a role in developing those priorities. I also look at, again, in some of my comments earlier on, you can look at a number of these and look at the different kind of learners we have in the education system. And, you know, a, a club on whatever it might be on, you know, diversity, for instance, may be a life changer for one student. And, you know, it may be a smaller participation by other students, but a lot of those, those programs are driven by student interest, student need, support from adults who are willing to supervise those and, and develop meaningful goals and so forth. So again, I would, as a board member, really look to administration to prioritize any of those, any programming, any clubs, any athletics, any, any services vis a vis transportation or otherwise that might deliver, you know, a budget the community will support.
Hey Holly, did that sufficiently answer your question for now?
It did. It just hasn't been something that we've been talking about. And if there's a choice between 30 elementary students in a classroom versus JV soccer, you know, I, I hope that we're, we're thinking about what our priorities are.
Thank you for that. Okay, the last person I have in the question and answer section, there are still some folks in chat, but we're, we're getting, we're getting close to the, the end. I wanted to make sure everyone had time to really give their questions and comments just because this is a really important issue, and we've had a lot of feedback from it, from the community. So thanks, everyone, for bearing with us as we're quite far out beyond our, our agenda. But, but I think it's important to get through everyone. So we have a question or a comment more from Hannah Gusterson. Is Hannah still on?
I don't see her.
Yeah, Hannah Gusterson. And I don't know if that's actually Tricia showing up as Hannah, but the comment was, "Thanks to Sriram, David, the board, and everyone else for engaging. I'm feeling like we all need to find the balance between how businesses function and how schools function in regards to making choices and budgeting. It's important to think out of the box and be open to redefining school districts, school, et cetera." And then I'll just skim through our chat. Lisa Finleyson, is Lisa still on? Steve? Lisa Finleyson, or Finleyson, I don't know how to pronounce her last name.
No, I see, I'm sorry.
Okay, she had put a question into chat. It said, "As a teacher and community member, the budget is always stressful. Will I be cut? Will my colleagues be here next year? Will my living costs go up? Number one, thank you for switching to laptops. I can't imagine having to teach online from home without it. Number two, David is the most reasonable superintendent I have worked under, and I completely trust him to balance the needs of the students, staff, and community. Number three, I feel like it's difficult for community members to fully understand intricate needs of a school beyond just teaching. Our students benefit immensely from the mentoring program, the addition of a behavior coach, and the implementation of social emotional learning. These supports have helped our most challenging students see success. This is a scary time, and we are only at the beginning of the effects of COVID-19. However, one day, hopefully sooner rather than later, our residents will be back to work and our kids will be back in our building. Let's tighten our belts, not degrade the integrity of our school." And I'm just skimming through our chat for other questions. Okay, so there, yeah, so there were a few other folks in there who had already had a chance to ask questions or make comments. I'm just gonna check if there's anyone else with their hand raised. I don't see, I don't see any other hands raised at the moment.
No.
Okay.
I would personally stick to the questions only and ask people in chat, post them as a question.
Okay, okay. So I think we're gonna move on at this stage. And thank you for everyone for your questions and comments and thoughts and for, for being patient with expanding the time we allotted to the budget discussion. So if I hear, board, any other follow-up questions or thoughts before we move on to the next agenda item?
Bridget, can I make a suggestion? That we, I think we kind of got a good idea for categories of questions from this, this forum regarding any revised budget. So it might make sense to try to pull those into an FAQ for folks who may not have been able to participate or tonight, or listen to the recording afterwards.
Does that make sense, David?
Yeah. Take the questions and try to put it into some categories and respond, is what I heard.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah. I, I think that would make sense just so we can share common information or if people have questions that they didn't have an opportunity in this forum to address.
These don't go away, right, Steve? We can keep them and correct all the questions that are asked.
Okay. Great suggestion. Thanks, Elizabeth. All right, hearing any other comments from the board is just tough without being able to see everyone. Okay. Agenda item number eight, executive limitations, policy and procedure review. And this is worn for action. Second reading of policy B1, board member conflict of interest. Second reading of policy B2, board member code of conduct. And second reading, guidelines on social media communications. Sure.
So I, we're meant while Steve's finding it to bring it up for people to see it. These typically are done at the beginning of our turnover after March Town meeting. We did put it on the agenda item on the last agenda. And we did talk about them briefly. Elizabeth kind of provided some, what I would say, quick overview. I would like to get them acted upon and allow board members to get signatures on them whichever way is the most convenient for us to do that. But not everybody being in one place. So that would be my recommendation. I think they're important to our work, and they have been important to our work as a board for several years. So again, I don't know if there's any particular question that board members have on there.
I did not, Alex, or Brian, or Martin, or Elizabeth?
I mean, I've read through the, the policies and I'm, I'm fine with them as they stand, so no questions or comments.
Same here, same here. This is Martin.
Yeah, this is Elizabeth. I'm, I'm good on code of conduct, conflict of interest. I do not, I don't know if I see the social media guidelines. Did we revise that or have a proposed revision to address, you know, other accounts? For some reason, I'm not seeing that in my packet.
Yeah, I'm not seeing it in the packet either.
Social media policy.
Let, let Steve look for it. I have Alex on too. Alex, you're getting some feedback, but your mic is open here. Go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. I'm also trying to boot up my machine as well, charging it here. So I, I didn't have any input on it, but I think Elizabeth was right that we weren't going to revise the social media communications policy because I think it was out of thing, it's incoming, it was written before. We had the, it's the school board Facebook group that we sometimes post information to. So we might want to revise that for.
Okay, so I'm, I'm fine. I'm, we'll have to go back and look at that feedback, but I'm a little bit fuzzy on that one, but I, then we're fine. Then take that one off the guidelines, and I'm certainly fine if other board members are fine with the other two to act on those.
Yeah, I would, I, I'm okay acting on the other two. I think Margot Rogers also had a comment about social media.
Bridget, can I make one more comment?
Yep, sure.
Just a quick one. I, I wouldn't, I, I would not suggest we do this at, with these policies right now. But one thing I've seen with other organizations is rather than have board members sign this within the context of a policy, it might be when a new, new board member, we could write this into the policy, but when a new board member comes on or is reelected to another term, that there be an individual signature agreeing to conflict of interest and code of conduct? So it's not strictly within the policy discussion?
Yeah, that's what I was, I, I have to say, I was a little confused because I thought that's how we had done it in the past. Like, I remember signing it as an individual board member, just to sort of acknowledge that I agreed to it as I came on both of the last times. I wasn't sure if we, I, I, I have to say, I missed why we decided to completely open it back up to discuss any changes to it at this stage. I don't recall why we decided to do that.
I don't know. I, I think that you, you're, you are, as a board, we usually do this at a, after the town meeting. And it's a good time to reboot yourself and make sure we're all on the same page and that you are all abiding by collaboratively together, whether you've been on the board for several years or your first year, first, first term. It was important, and again, that's what the SBA, I believe, recommends. what the SBA, I believe, recommends, but I'm happy to check into that. They generally recommend that you do it on an annual basis. Alina?
I believe the reason you wanted to redo the signatures is because there were previous board members who had signed the original policies.
I, I do remember that, Jolena, on, on these specific policies. So we had the current board. But I also, I don't know if I've seen it within our own board or within other organizations where when you, it wouldn't, it would, the policy review would be annual, David, but there'd be an individual signature at the start of each term. So there was some record that individual members were agreeing to this versus approving a policy.
Yeah, makes sense.
We don't, I, again, we don't have to address it right now because it might be in the context of a future discussion, but just a thought.
Yeah, gotcha.
Okay. So then on policy B1, a board member conflict of interest, are we ready to take action on it? Then?
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion that we approve the board member conflict of interest policy B1.
Do I have a second?
I'll second. It's Martin.
Okay, let's do a roll call vote since we're not in the same room. So I'll start with Brian.
I.
Martin?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
I.
Alex?
I.
And I'm an I as well. So motion passes.
I don't know if they heard Alex.
Alex was an I, yes. And, and then do I have a motion on policy B2, board members' code of conduct?
I'll make a motion to approve the board members' code of conduct policy B2.
I'll second. Martin again.
We'll have a roll call vote. Brian?
I.
Barton?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
I.
Alex?
I.
And I'm an I as well. So the motion passes. So policy B2 is approved. And I believe we've decided that guidelines on social media will be moved to the next meeting for further review. I don't know if Margot is still on and whether she still has a question. I know early in the meeting she had said that when we got to this policy, she would have a question about it. Okay. Do you want to unmute her? Okay, Margot, would you like to ask your question?
Yeah, my question is really on the social media policy and partly was, the question I had was just what is the social media policy? And, and specifically what causes me to ask that is I was taken aback by the Twitter post of Patrick Burke recently that, well, I think we'll have to disagree, agree to disagree, that it's fear mongering, but prior to there being a proposed, a revised proposed budget, he posted something to say, something like, oh, we're gonna have to cut all programming and, and reduce headcount by whatever, thirty teachers or whatever. And I just wonder how appropriate that is, given that there was no approved budget or even proposed revised budget that indicated that at that time, or even now for that matter. And it seems very much like fear mongering. And I wonder, you know, and then he sort of backwalked it a little and said, oh, well, that's what I was told instead of, oh, this is what I think. But is he informed on this budget? Why is he not coming to these meetings and participating in this? And yet he's then posting out on social media. I mean, we sort of want a leader and it's hard, social media is hard enough to get accurate information. And then when somebody posts something that, you know, in, in a, in a position of authority as he has, when there is no proposal out there that states that we're gonna cut all programs and cut twenty, twenty some odd teachers. You know, people are looking for accurate information and that's not based on, you know, anything that's even been proposed. I mean, you can argue that, oh, it might be, might be the situation, but it feels fear mongering to me. And so I'm, I'm curious as to what the policy is around his posts or posts such as that from people in that position. And.
I think David has an answer in one second, but I just wanted to clarify, we're talking right now about the social media communications policy for the board specifically. So I don't, I'm not brushing aside your question at all, but I just want to clarify that the one that we're considering here and that we'll consider in the next meeting really has to do with how the board communicates via social media or.
Gotcha. Okay.
And, and Bridgette, if I can add to that, the reason the board has a specific policy is because of open meeting law. So that there isn't a venue where there can be interactions between board members or the board not, or we, the board takes action as a body, not as individuals. So there's not representation, for instance, by one board member about what a board might do or what the, what discussion has occurred, that sort of thing, because that does have to occur in public.
Okay, thank you for that distinction.
I don't know if you've had a comment regarding Patrick's tweet.
Again, Patrick's been, he's a longtime administrator, highly respected in the state. He is one who does tweet and he provides, you know, a lot of information that is followed by many about student successes and outcomes. The information that he shared was factual. It was shared by me about looking at alternatives. I shared it verbally with the board. You know, it was not something within a recommended budget, but it was looking at just providing broad brush kind of, you know, ideas. And so he did pick that up and did share it. He did not make it up. He did share it in that forum. And again, we can, we can go back and forth about whether that was appropriate or not. But again, part of, part of people telling the story is using accurate information. Again, these may be areas where we look at more further, but he certainly was fact-based when he, when he did share that. These are areas that we're looking at. He did not say they were going to happen. He was making, you know, just the, just providing the information.
I beg to differ about the language used and how it certainly was interpreted by many. I, I think it was highly unprofessional and inappropriate, but we'll have to agree to disagree on that. But, and, and which is really disappointing because I think he has done a great job in his daily, in his daily updates that he provides, an email about what's going on and stuff like that. So it was really disappointing to see that. Because, you know, in other ways, I, I do agree with you. I think he's done a great job in communications through this COVID-19 thing. And that was very different feeling to me and I think to many. And I was disappointed.
Thank you for that feedback. We are gonna have to move along. We have one hand raised right now. Srini has his hand raised. I'm not sure because it's been raised and unraised a couple of times. I don't know, Srini, if you still have a question or a comment. Steve has unmuted you. If you would like to make a comment?
Yeah, I, I guess, I guess, you know, I, I understand that a significant part of the community, you know, don't fully understand all these numbers and there is the budget increase, there is the CLA and the property tax increase and all that. But I think when we talk about budget and when we are trying to figure out, you know, what is, what needs to be done and what we need to focus on, I don't think it's very productive to focus on defining CLAs and comparing CLAs from one district to the other district. So I would just suggest that maybe, maybe the board and the administration can schedule a separate informational meeting or something to explain to people. This is a lot of valuable time for a lot of people. We would like to focus on the budget. That's what is relevant to the administration. So I just have the suggestion that in future meetings, you know, let's not focus on comparing CLAs between different districts because that is completely out of the hands of the administration and the board.
Thank you for that. Thank you for that suggestion, Srini. We, we have, we have, we have taken it under advisement and are trying to to move on past our budget discussion. We will, but I, I hear you. Again, David had, had said, we just had a lot of questions about it before the meeting and had been asked to compare different aspects to different districts. So that was really the spirit of, of those discussions. So I'm, I'm, I think we need to move along. Are there any other questions or comments on item eight about social media communications? Since that's the only open item that we have not closed off yet in that item? Nope. Okay, moving along. Item number nine, negotiations update. So this is just a discussion, giving folks an update on where we are. Elizabeth, would you like to do this or would you like me to do this?
Sure, I can give an update on the SBA negotiations. We did have to cancel. We actually got a fairly last minute cancellation on the March sixteenth negotiation session that was scheduled largely due to all the changes that were happening directed by the governor in terms of school closures and so forth. And then we, we had a, another date scheduled for March thirtieth. The board has suggested utilizing Zoom to meet and continue negotiations. At, at this point, I don't know if, I don't believe that's acceptable to the association. So we remain open to alternative methods of moving the dialogue forward. So we can look to secure a contract prior to the start of next year's school year. But that's the status right now. So we're a little, little bit in limbo and waiting on that.
Okay. Martin or Brian, did you have any update on administrators or support staff?
No update. We have not had our second meeting yet for the staff and we haven't started yet with the administration, given everything that's been going on.
Thank you for that. I, moving right along, since I see no questions regarding negotiations update. Moving right along to item number 10, allowable tuition rate reconciliation for fiscal year ending June 30, 2019.
Yep, that's in your packet. And it was prepared by Amity. And there's a recommendation in here for that rate. And it does discount the three percent, but then does add the additional charge of the $925. And so it increases the adjusted charge per pupil to fifteen five sixty-one. Again, this is a calculation. This is not something that we arbitrarily we have to do the calculation. We have announced tuition, which is announced initially, and then based on the factors, we have the ability to go back and charge the allowable tuition. So this is a recommendation to move that forward. Amity, do you have anything you want to add?
I don't. I don't have anybody has any questions.
Alex here, I have a question.
Go ahead, Alex. He has a question.
Okay, so I believe that what we should be asking school districts for is not the net of three percent, which is nine hundred and twenty-five, but the full amount of fourteen oh six. Can you go back and check the law on this?
We are allowed to excuse the three percent and historically the district has done that in the past.
That's, that's a, that's a, that's your decision. It's, it's a, it's a, it's a process that the, the district has used before. Again, if it's been within the three percent, we've excused that amount. But went over, we've, this is an approach we've had. Again, this is up to the board. This is a recommendation that's coming to you based on our general past practice. We do think it's important to capture this difference.
Okay, well, I guess the point I'm making is that we're not capturing the entire difference. We're capturing all the three percent as well. It's not really, we're not giving a three percent discount. We're giving a, you know, we're, we're collecting nine hundred and twenty-five per kid when we could be collecting fourteen oh six.
Correct.
So since this is born for action, I'm gonna make the motion that the school district requests from other sending districts that stop billing, stop billing to bill them for the entire amount unless that is somehow precluded by law of fourteen oh six per student.
Can we ask, I mean, are there other board members that have thoughts about that?
They might not have heard Alex's response.
Oh, sorry. So just in case anyone couldn't hear, because Alex is on the phone. We're struggling a little bit with the technology. Alex McHenry, who's one of our board members, phoned in to say that the, just the document that's being shared shows that the allowable tuition is sixteen thousand forty-two. And we build, or our announced tuition was only fourteen six three six. And he was saying that he didn't believe we should take out the three percent of allowable tuition, the four hundred and eighty-one, but rather we should go ahead and bill districts for that school year for the full difference of fourteen oh six, as opposed to billing them for nine twenty-five. And David's response was really that in the past, if we had over or under billed by more or less than three percent, we had not gone back to other districts to try to collect if we had under billed by less than three percent. And so that was the logic behind taking that three percent out before determining the charge to addition to other districts. And so I didn't know if other board members had thoughts about that.
Can you tell me how big of a difference it is again? Are we over three percent?
The difference of four hundred and eighty-one dollars.
Well, the three percent is four hundred and eighty-one dollars. So we, we were under by fourteen oh six. Three percent of allowable tuition is four eighty-one. And so the proposal from the superintendent is to bill other districts the difference, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars per tuition student for the, for the FY nineteen school year. And my, my thought, I mean, is I, my understanding of why we did not typically go back for, you know, a, an overcharge or an undercharge of within three percent of our, our announced tuition was that, you know, in some years, it, it's hard to hit it precisely on the head. It changes after, you know, based on factors provided by the state after we make our announced tuition. And that's just a matter of timing and that within three percent. Some years we might be slightly over, some years we might be slightly under, but it wasn't, it wasn't good to go back to other districts to try to reclaim a small amount of money on each tuition student. But it seems to me that in a year where we're going back, we are going back to other districts to bill them for the full cost of those students. That it would make sense to me to bill them for the full amount.
What, David, what do, what's the practice between districts on this? What do other districts do?
I don't actually recall. I know I've, I've had that, but I, I don't know. I don't, Amity, do you have any feedback on it?
I don't have an answer for that either, no.
Typically, again, this is, this is post. So again, I think Amity can tell you that it was announced late. To us, there was some lag in, in getting this. So again, we go out with an announced rate. And then we have a period by, where which we provide the service and we can go back. And once the allowable rate is announced, to then back bill, right? So this is. So this is essentially back billing for those services. Obviously, the understanding is that we're all in this together and trying to be sensitive to the fluidity of tuition rates between what you said was announced going to be and then what allowed it to be. So there's some, you know, there's some sensitivity to these changing numbers on our, our sending districts. That said, you know, we are, we have in past, you know, billed them for, for some of that. But I don't know, anything to add, Amity?
No, we certainly could adjust this. We followed our past practice on this, but by all means, we can bring this back to the board the next meeting and build these districts. You know, we are also mindful, the fact that those districts did not budget this fund, they did what we allow, or we announced, excuse me. And so now they do know that they run a risk that we could be billing for additional. And it is a little later because usually they are now, that these are given to us in December, but the state was behind times again with their publishing of our allowable rate. So, but happy to come back to the board with a full 1406 per student.
I would be, this is Elizabeth, I would be inclined to, one, sort of check what the practices are with neighboring districts. But I also, I, I do have a concern about setting a precedent that sort of forgives the 3% on a routine basis. And given that this is our, is based on budgets that have already been approved in other districts, I would propose that we might think about a, a walk-up to, you know, that might, this is, I think what we're asking for is about 65% of the total difference. And, you know, we might do something and send the message to other districts that, you know, this year it might be 75 or 80, but in future years, you know, our intent is to look at the full amount. But that, that's just a thought. I think it, I personally, I think I'd like to see a little bit of feedback about what other districts' practices are. Because we're, we, we would be on the receiving end of this as well, correct?
This is a receiving thing, yes.
But I mean, we would, do we have students that would be subject to this as well?
Meaning, are you saying, Elizabeth, that are there tuition students that we have that are going out to other districts, so other districts could potentially bill us back for?
Yeah.
No.
Okay, so we, so that is not an issue.
Right.
We pay on vocational, but that's not connected.
Vocational doesn't fall under this.
Okay, yeah, that's what I was wondering, actually. So I, I would be inclined to just do a little bit of due diligence on what other practices. I assume Essex and Colchester would be two of the other ones that do, might do a fair amount of this, is that accurate?
That would be accurate, yes.
Okay, so if we, if we do that and check with Essex and Colchester and I, at a minimum, directionally start to work toward, you know, the 100%, I think that would make sense.
Okay.
So it's Brian here with questions, I guess. The first question is, what is the precedence, how often does this happen, I guess, for our district that we're outside of the 3% if either Amity or David knows? And the other one is, do you see any negative repercussions if we do make this change and start taking the 3% as well?
I do not believe we've had to balance bill other districts for a good number of years. We've been pretty close. I think this FY19 kind of was a, an oddity due to the way we set the rate in, at the budget time, it was a little lower than what we ended with. And as far as your other question, I don't know if there would be any repercussions to that, it's really a tough question to answer.
I think the repercussions are, are ones that are mostly associated with school boards and administration from other sending districts that have to have a conversation around coming up with those dollars to, to support that, right? And it was maybe more or less, obviously it's, in this case would be more than. And I have Alex, go ahead, Alex.
I, I, I'm, you know, I got the statute on my laptop here. And, well, let's see, it looks as though it is equal to the amount, that it's between 3% and 10% unchecked, the sending district has paid tuition excess, the receiving district has undercharged tuition in an amount of 3% or more, that the calculated net cost, which is what we're, the situation we're in, sending district shall pay the receiving district an amount equal to the amount of the undercharge that is between 3% and 10% of the net, net cost per pupil. So it, it looks like by statute, we're forced to leave that 3% on the pupil, unfortunately.
Uh huh. Well, that answers that question. So I'm sorry, I wasn't aware of the statute. This is nothing I've had to do in my term, so I apologize for not knowing that answer.
So that's all right. And the funny thing is, we're very close to that, well, we're not quite at that 10%, but we're close to it. So unfortunately, you know, the problem you have is me, because I used to work at the agency at that time, but that was 10 years ago, so I, I used to know it like the back of my hand, but I don't now. And unfortunately, you know, it came to mind, but it looks like we do unfortunately lose out on that 3%. I'm sorry for throwing out this big distraction.
Yeah, I, I think, I don't think it's a problem, it would be good if the board, I mean, whatever the board wants to do, you can, given what Alex said, due diligence, we can find out what other districts have done. I mean, it sounds like they're probably following the law as written, but, you know, if you want to get a dipstick and bring it back for the next meeting, that's certainly understandable based on what Amity, you know, you shared.
Yeah, could we just, I, I would feel better if we just, if we just sort of asked around about what people do and, and all of us had a minute to read the statute before we made a decision on this, that's, that's my opinion, I don't know what other board members think.
Brian again, yeah, totally agree.
Okay.
I, I agree as well, this is Martin.
All right, so we'll bring that one back for next meeting.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Alex.
Thank you, Alex.
Okay, item number 11, consider qualification package for amended and restated 403B plan and restated retirement income plan documents with future planning associates, and this is worn for action.
Just to iterate, there were no changes to our current plan document for the new plan documents, this is truly just a restatement, but it is IRS regulation that has to be done every, about every six years. So I don't know if there's any questions, but nothing really has changed with these documents.
I move that we approve the qualification package for amended and restated 403B, this is Martin.
Do I have a second?
Mart, I have a question.
Yes, Elizabeth.
Sorry, I was on mute, I was, I thought, Martin, I thought you were interrupting me and I was on mute, so sorry.
I would never do that, except just now.
Well, I'm, I'm putting mute on and off, so it's a little, a little unnerving to me. Just, Amity, for the benefit of folks who are listening or will listen to the recording and for the board, could you describe the, who this amended and restated retirement income plan pertains to?
Yes, so there's two plans that you're looking at, one is the 403B plan, that actually affects all staff because all of our employees are eligible to contribute their own dollars to the 403B plan. And what we do as a district is we adopt the state's plan. So it is, it is in effect for all employees. The support staff does get a match from the district and, but they are the only group that does. And the defined benefit plan is for support staff who have worked for the district full time prior to September 11, 2013. That plan was sunsetted for any new employees after that date of hire, but that's the group of employees that are affected.
Okay, and then my last question on this was, and I asked this before, was, has there been any, and I, I realize these are distinctive service offerings from future planning, but has there been any review of the firm that offers the defined benefit plan?
No, we have not gone out to bid on those services, it is on my list of things that need to be done.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so I have a motion to approve this qualification package. Do I have a second?
Yeah, Brian here, I will second.
We'll do a roll call vote. Brian?
Yep, aye.
Martin?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Aye.
Alex? Okay, and the motion passes.
The board has to direct you to sign the documents.
Okay, and do I need a motion for them to direct me to sign the document?
I think it'd be good, just because they're not all here and they can't all sign them, so.
I'll make a motion to delegate Bridget Burkhart to sign on behalf of the board.
Brian here, I'll second that.
And we'll do a vote. Brian?
Aye.
Martin?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Aye.
Alex? And that motion passes as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 12, other paper articles.
I did get a note from Carol that we have one that's due, and I believe, Alex, it's you.
Due tomorrow, yes, in fact.
We do, and I have not heard it, but I can do it. However, the way things have changed so much, I, I'd like to know the feedback from the board, you know, we want to do it about the budget and perhaps you can mention the bond vote, but perhaps we should just change it to a, what is the school board doing it during the coronavirus time? Or perhaps I could try to work the two together. I'm looking for feedback on that.
Well, we may have missed the submission deadline, frankly, hold on.
Well, unless they change the submission deadline on us, Elizabeth, the submission deadline was supposed to be the 26th, which is tomorrow. And normally, they give us a little bit of extra time if we need it, at least through the end of the day Friday, if not sometime during the weekend. We would have to double check that, I don't know what their status is given the coronavirus. I know there are a lot of local newspapers that are shutting down print editions and slowing down what they're doing, I haven't heard anything from them myself, I don't know, Delina's shaking her head, it doesn't look like she's heard anything from them either.
I did get a note from Carol that indicates, let me know if you're planning on sending one, please, I should also note that if you do send one, I'll definitely prepare it for the April 2nd issue, but since things are far from normal right now, we can't guarantee it would run in that issue, but she would keep us posted.
I did want to say, I saw that Cole Patnow has his hand up, and I don't know if he has a comment or a question about Delaney's article or Alex, I don't know.
Cole, you can, I think you're unmuted, Cole, if you would like to make a comment.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, everyone, um, I was just wondering if the board would like something from Delaney and I, Delaney's all set for the mental health one in April, I believe, but I was wondering if you guys were interested in having one either co-written by us, or I don't mind doing it, about how online learning is for us right now, or even if that was just something that you put it on the district page. I just wanted to offer that if you guys wanted.
Awesome.
I think that's, that's a good thought, Cole, I think it might be a little bit premature, to tell you the truth, because we, we're still sort of figuring things out at the district level, I know you're having a, a specific experience with it. I, I personally would wait to see how long that goes and might consider that for the, one of the next two issues if needed, but I, I, I don't know, I mean, it might be good to do, I'm just thinking out loud here, some kind of budget update, so at least there's an awareness that there's been further discussion and kind of the, some of the, the themes that are occurring, that sort of thing.
Well, the other thing, Elizabeth, if it's, if it's going to be published on April 2nd, I was just looking at the timing. So we're supposed to approve the budget on Monday, April 6th. And we have another discussion on the 1st, so it would be, it would unfortunately come out the day after we have that discussion on the 1st.
Good point, yep.
But it would, if people still had thoughts or questions or comments, the approval date so far, I mean, I guess we could change this in it, but right now, I'm just looking at the next agenda item, which is the, the agendas for the next two meetings, our agenda on the 6th really is that, that's our, that's kind of our deadline for approving the budget that would go on the ballot. So it might be timely to have something in there about where we've got to so far on the, the planning for the budget, just so that, that, you know, I don't know, it would just might be a good use of that space, is what I'm saying. I don't know what you think about that.
I mean, personally, I would think that would be the most topical, and it, and it again, further engages people, which we're trying to do and just don't know how many people can participate in this kind of venue.
Yeah, the only challenge is that we don't have real firm numbers yet to put in that article because we're still considering additional changes.
Yeah.
But I guess that it could state that this is where we are so far and, and that the board has directed administration to come back with additional potential reductions on April 1st.
Well, it could also address some of the discussion items we've had as well, with the assumption that other community members might have similar questions.
Yep. So Alex, are you comfortable trying to do that before tomorrow?
Yeah, that sounds fine.
Okay, thank you for that. And then, obviously, we'll be around if you need, if you have questions. And then Delaney is, as Cole said, on for the one that's due on April 30th, which would run in the May 7th issue, and that would be on mental health. And then we have Martin to put in a legislative update that would be due on the 28th of May to run in the SIPs 4 issue. I don't know, Martin, what your thoughts are, whether you will actually be wrapped up for the year at that stage, or whether we should plan something else in that spot and maybe push that back by a month.
That's a good question.
I, I think it might be a good, a good opportunity to have, to take Cole and Delaney up on the, sort of keeping a placeholder on the online learning side of it, as well as maybe a review of what each of the schools sort of have done to support learning during whatever period of time we're going to be talking about.
I agree, I think that would be, I think that would be timely, to update the broader community, obviously, parents and students will be in the middle of it, but it would be good for the broader community to, to know what's been going on with the COVID-19 response and, and online learning specifically.
So, so it would seem that if everything changes and the trajectory changes and the legislature gets something done, then I could do the legislative update, if we continue on this path, which is almost certain, then it would make more sense to do the online learning. Because if I have a legislative update, that means that we're not doing online learning anymore, essentially.
That's true, that's true, and it's true that we have a few meetings in between where we can revise the, the list, so maybe we just sort of put both of those on there for now and, and we can bring it back up at a future meeting.
I do think, though, I want to say, this is Brian again, that I really like Cole's idea, and while it's true what Elizabeth said that it's early days yet, you know, to do it in the June 4th issue is, whatever it is, nine or 10 weeks away, I don't know if there's a different forum or venue that a, a smaller story could be done or a series, or if there's a way to get an extra article in the other paper or something, but I think, yeah, it's early now, but it would be kind of late to do it in early June, I, I would love to see something from Cole and/or Delaney.
Yeah, I would think, I would, I would think that the other paper would be interested in that story, and it wouldn't even count necessarily as, as one of ours, so maybe we should reach out to them and see if So maybe we should reach out to them and see if they would print that separate story.
I can do that. I'll do that to Carol, but I'd also say there's nothing preventing, you know, letters that would just might be limited by, you know, word count.
Right.
Yeah, let me, let me reach out to Carol on that. You okay with that, Cole? Whoops, did we mute him?
Yeah.
Yep, that works.
Okay. Great. All right, do we have any other ideas for later issues? Or should we move along, given where we are in the agenda for the night? Okay.
I think we should move along, but I think there are going to be a lot of opportunities for more articles.
Yep, I agree. So our next item on the agenda, item number 13, is to set agendas for the April 1st and the April 6th board meetings. April 1st is a regular board meeting with a full agenda. April 6th, which is a Monday, is a special meeting that's been warned just to consider action on the budget and the meeting warning for the budget. So we should first focus, I suppose, on April 1st. Steve, can you share, do you have it?
You're going to add back in the allowable tuition.
Yeah. Yeah, there we go, okay.
I don't think we're going to have any city-school collaboration. Well, we can leave it there.
I think we should leave it as a standing agenda item and, and we'll just say that we haven't had any further meeting.
I may have. We can take off item 8, because you did the calendar.
Yeah.
I think you're good.
Do we need another COVID-19 update, though? Would that be under superintendent's report? I was just looking at anything else. Okay, any other changes or additions to the April 1st agenda? Will we have any more clarity on enrollments at that stage?
Current and projected enrollment?
Yeah.
You can put it on there if you want. I usually, I had it kind of blunted in there tonight. I had a, but we can do it, I'll do it within the budget. Update. You can do, you're talking about first?
Just, yeah, just, maybe it's still too early, but just any sense, any sense of what kindergarten is starting to look like and, you know, and any other enrollments.
Work, so why don't we do district budgets? We'll put another bullet after COVID-19 and we'll do enrollment update.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to Monday, April 6th, this is a pretty simple agenda because it's really focused on the budget and the warning for the budget. Any comments on this agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll call that one approved as well. Moving along to agenda item number 14, future agenda items. Given the time tonight, do we want to dive into this? Or should we push this one forward to the next meeting?
Yeah, I'd push it forward, Bridget.
I would agree. All right, item number 15, consider the minutes of March 2, March 4, March 9, March 11, and March 16, 2020. Lot of minutes to approve. So we'll start with March 2. It was just a negotiations subcommittee meeting, so mostly executive session. Any comments from those who were present? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to March 4, which was a regular school board meeting. Did anyone have any comments on this one? Just a coronavirus is slightly misspelled, but not, nothing substantive that I had in here. Did anyone else have any thoughts? Okay, hearing none, we'll consider those approved. March 9, which was another negotiations subcommittee. Again, this is just a planning session, legal counsel.
I was not actually present, this is Brian, but that was all I saw.
Okay, so we'll take that off and consider those approved with that small change. The meeting of March 11, which was a special meeting where we discussed the budget, but in the end did not approve a budget for 2021. Did anyone have any comments on those minutes? Okay, seeing none, we'll consider those approved. And last but not least, March 16. Again, this is just in a short executive session from 6:30 to 7:00. And then a special, our special meeting to discuss budget. Okay, seeing no comments on those, we'll consider those minutes approved as well. Moving on to item number 16, a consent agenda. There is one retirement to report. David, I don't know if you wanted to say a word on this?
Absolutely, yeah, Fireko, longtime language teacher, world language teacher, French, 34 years, you know, here in South Burlington. Absolutely strong passion for teaching young children. Really hard for her to do this because she loves, she has a passion for young kids. But started back in 1986, 34 years later, here she is. And then it's kind of with a lot of emotions, but she's retiring. Again, just a big, a big shout out to her for all of her energy. Did I do that right?
Yeah, no, and am I correct in thinking, was she Teacher of the Year a couple of years back? I want to say.
I know, I'm not, that's possible. I'm not remembering that, but that could be because it's late. If you couldn't like bring it up. It's, you're probably right, Bridget. But if she, if she wasn't, she's certainly been an awesome teacher to our district and to the kids of Tuttle, and again, as I said, the district. So again, I would be remiss not to take a few, a minute there to just celebrate that. So thank you for letting me do that.
So thank you for, yes, and please relay our gratitude for many, many years of service. Okay, item number 17, accounts payable orders number 32, 33, and 34. Did anyone have any questions or comments on these accounts payable orders?
I had one question, which I brought up in a previous meeting, and it doesn't need to be answered tonight, it's just sort of general curiosity. But in number 34 on page 6, I was looking at the Green Mountain power charges. And again, I'm noticing that the middle school is so much higher than the other facilities, and I was just wondering why that is. Doesn't need to be answered tonight, just curious.
I believe I can answer it, Brian, in that we get net meters from a solar array that is at the landfill. And so the other schools are, there's a listing of the schools that get the credits for those. And I believe high school gets the most and then smaller amounts to the elementaries. But I don't think there's anything at the middle school. We're only limited to what they offer us.
Yeah, I think it was the way the contract, it was the way it was written on the solar array net metering charges. And I'm, I think at the time, the middle school didn't, it had some different things in it because it's an emergency location site. It's got generation on site, so I think that's what took it out. But Amity's absolutely right, and that's an important thing to remember for the community is that we, you know, we have invested in the solar array with the city, and it does give us credits back on our electricity, which was in, I don't know how many years ago that was, three or four maybe now?
Yeah.
Thanks, Amity.
Thank you.
Good question, Brian.
Okay. Any other questions, any accounts payable? Hearing none, I'll move on to item number 18, accounts payable order checks to the Howard Center and the amount of $196,467.84. And Essex Westford School District in the amount of $75,729.75. And I don't know if you wanted to say a word about this to me, David, or Amity, just the Howard Center one just being so much larger than some of our typical Howard Center ones. It might just help for those who are paying attention to understand what they are.
I can, I can speak to that one, Howard. David, you want me to do that?
Go ahead, yep.
So it includes the third payment for the social work contract. We pay that in four quarters, so it only comes up once every three months. This check, Ron happened to have that third quarter payment for the social workers that are in our, in each of our schools. And then also tuition for those students that are placed at Howard Center. Special needs students.
Great. And then Essex Westford, it looks like this is for the tech center in Essex. So it's tuition payment for the students who are going, from our district, who are going to the tech center in Essex.
Correct, that's the second of the two payments for that.
So do I have a motion to approve the accounts payable order checks to Howard Center and the amount of $196,467.84 and Essex Westford ECUUSD in the amount of $75,729.75?
So moved, this is Martin.
Brian here, and I'll second that.
Okay, and we'll do a quick roll call vote, last one of the night.
And you, and we've got to authorize you.
And, okay. Is it possible to vote both of them at the same time? Or do we need to have two separate roll call votes? I don't know, my.
I think you can do together.
Okay.
Then, then they can also.
And is it possible for someone to amend the motion to add that you are authorizing Bridget Burkhart to sign those approvals on behalf of the board?
I will amend the motion as such.
And I'll second that.
Okay, so then can we have a roll call vote on the motion as amended and seconded? Brian?
Yes, to all, please.
Martin?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Aye.
Alex? Although I, so the, the motion is approved as amended. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Martin.
And Brian seconds.
And our final roll call vote of the night, Alex? Elizabeth?
Yes, and thanks to all.
Brian?
Yes, indeed.
And Martin?
Yes, and good job, Bridget, nice meeting.
Thank you, we are adjourned. Thanks for your patience, everyone.